I call the order of a regular meeting of the Goodyear City Council, 28 August 2006. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation led by Councilmember Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Would you please stay standing and bow our heads? Lord, we praise you for your presence. And, Lord, remind us that another new day is another new opportunity to come together. Give us the determination to turn indecision into decision for the good of the city. And, Lord, lay your protective hands over our troops serving around the world and give a special blessing to our hard-working city employees in your name. Amen.
Thank you. All councilmembers are in attendance. We have the draft minutes of a special meeting held on August 10th for our review and approval. Anyone object to the minutes or wish to add to them? Could we have a motion to approve those? I know we didn't do that in the past, but I'm told we should. So, a motion to approve the minutes.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the minutes signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Coz. The ayes have it, 7-0. We do have expenditures to approve or ratify this evening. I'd like to go to the February 2006 accounts payable. Are there any comments on those? Seeing none, could we have a motion to approve the accounts payable for February 2006?
So moved.
Okay. A motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. All those in favor signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Coz. The ayes have it, 7-0. We'll now go to communications. Opportunity first for anyone in the public or on the council who'd like to make a commendation or a favorable comment on any subject or any person. Anyone like to do that? We'll start with Councilmember Lord.
Okay. I don't know if you're aware, but we've had through the YMCA a group called Boots and Garters, and we've been working on this a number of years. And what we do is, we raise campaign funds, actually, for the strong kids for the YMCA. We pay for many scholarships. And I was asked to give this certificate to the council because, to give you an example, what we've done, and this is just, say, about 15 housewives that all get together, well, they'd be mad if I said "housewives," 12 professional women. But the first year we started this in 2003, and we made $44,150. In 2004, we made $57,114. In 2005, we made $58,874. And we would like to say our thank you to the council and the City of Goodyear for helping us and contributing to this. So, this is Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Sousa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to point out that four members of the council attended the Conference of Cities and Towns during the past week and proved beneficial to all of us. We all attended important meetings relative to municipal government, and I think we're all trained now to administer those lessons that we learned. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Opportunity for any report from a council member on current events. Yes, ma'am.
I attended the Goodyear Block Party, and it was very well done. I was so impressed by Kirby and the Collectors, and we happened to get a front-line seat when they first started, did their debut. But it was really interesting to see them out in action, and they had all the different sizes of garbage cans. It was very well attended. And Brian even let me work behind the counter, trying to make sure that everybody understood exactly what size they were getting and when pickup and recycle days were. The second thing I wanted to bring up has to do with the city slides at the movies. If you've guys been to the movies lately, you would have seen that, especially Palm Valley, let me mention that, not down at the Costco area, but they now have slides that come up that tell you about the city of Goodyear. And I had presented this idea to Paula in the past, and she made it happen. And so, I got to see three different slides up there last night. One was on recycling. Welcome to Goodyear, we do recycling. The other one was, we are looking for good employees. And the third one was had to do with water conservation, and I just want to tell Paula that you did a great job, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Opportunity for the city manager now on current events, legislative matters.
No, I'm at this time.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to citizen comments. It's an opportunity for any citizen to make a comment on any subject which is not on this evening's agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We have a request from Don King.
Okay. Don King, please.
Don King?
Might check out in the hallway there.
There he comes.
Your good friend was Don King.
Yeah. I look a little paler in person.
You don't have the hair.
Yeah, it's in the morning. If I could do this, I apologize, this is my first time dressing anything.
Oh, you're doing great.
Oh, thank you. If I could give these to you guys to take a look at, and as a matter of fact, you guys need to take one of these, make sure my notes aren't part of that, and pass it down. This is about the abandoned shopping carts that have shown up all over our city. You know, aside from being an eyesore, I think they are a safety hazard, and I would like to see something done about that. The current packet that is being passed around with photographs are six different locations, you know, from on Van Geren Street between Estrella Parkway and Cerval. And I'd like to see something being done about that, if possible, or put on the agenda for more discussions. This particular matter had been, you know, the, I apologize, I should go back to the first page on that packet that Mr. Sosa has. That shopping cart sat there for three weeks. The management was notified three times by me to remove it. They failed to do so. A code compliance manager from the city stopped there twice, and it wasn't until a reporter from the West Valley View that it finally was removed. And that particular supermarket's not the only offender. This is going on all over town. That's just a small snapshot of what's going on. I would like to, one of the things that I could see happening would be the city hiring an official to patrol the area and remove these carts, and then notifying the cart's owner that the city has them, and then charging the owner to retrieve them. And if the owner doesn't retrieve them within so many days, then the city has a right to dispose of them. The other option I can figure out would be the city requires all retail establishments with carts to have some sort of a wheel-locking device on them so that they don't go out of the parking lot. And that's what I have to say.
Great ideas. Do you have a telephone number you can give us so we can get it back to you?
Oh, sure, sure. As a matter of fact, let me, I'll just give you, how should I do this?
Just give it.
Over there.
We have it here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, all right. Okay. And definitely, we will investigate that. We all know that's a problem, and thankfully to you, you're bringing it up.
Okay.
So, we'll respond to it. We won't be complacent. We'll have it on our agenda here in the future. Good.
It's just a small sidebar to this. Having lived in Europe for so many years, on their carts, they have a little coin, and you have to put like a quarter in it, and you just have to take, put it in, and then when you take, if you want to take your cart back to get your quarter, otherwise you don't get your quarter back.
Oh.
So, it was a way that really people just didn't take those carts anyplace. They returned it so they could get their quarter back. Anyway, just throw that out to you.
And Goodyear is such a wonderful place to live. It really is.
Glad to feel that way. And this is a blight. You're right. Right? Mr. Mayor? Member Sousa?
Several years ago, when we attended meetings on the Cities and Towns, there was an organization that a lot of the grocery stores' organizations utilized for this particular purpose. And I'm just wondering whether or not that's gone by the wayside. I think it's something we can check out with the stores proper and see if they can bring them back in somehow. They were very effective, I know that. They not only picked up the carts, but they repaired them as well, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, the last thing we'd hate to see in accidents, you know, at least in the monsoon windfall pretty hard, and, you know, some, you know, gets on the street and somebody hits it and all that.
Appreciate your interest, believe me.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Any other comments on a non-agenda item?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. and Mrs. Kirschbaum would like to address the council.
On a non-agenda item?
Yes.
Is it on the agenda?
No.
No. You can come up.
I don't know if I'm speaking on behalf of both of us or if we're both speaking. I don't know if this is on the agenda or not. I just kind of walked in. But on behalf of the mayor, can I say something that he's just, that's another time?
That's an agenda item.
That's an agenda item.
Yeah, I appreciate your coming on.
We understood you weren't going to speak on Lipsco.
Oh, do I? I didn't know. But I'll be glad to. I'll be, I'm sorry, I didn't know I was going to. Maybe they assumed I was going to. But I'll gladly speak on Lipsco. It stinks! It hasn't changed. We've had a wonderful meeting supposedly with the powers that be, and the odor has not changed. And we don't know where to go from here. That's, and that's the truth.
On that issue, have you filed a complaint with the ACC? A formal complaint? With the Arizona Corporation Commission? Because I know the mayor and I both were out at that.
They were at the meeting.
I know. Yeah, I know, I know.
If you.
I've talked to her, I've talked to her on it.
Good.
And also, air quality also.
I would document each and every incident that you smell something that's on the stairway.
Oh, yeah. And we're not the only ones.
And I understand that. I would turn that over to Commissioner May's office.
She, I talked to her just last week.
Fantastic.
Okay, so that's where we're at.
The race has been done.
Nothing's been done.
Thank you for all your work.
Well, you're welcome.
And then we'll hold your card for two CD.
Two CD?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we'll call you.
Okay. Get him this time.
Any other comments on a non-agenda item? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. Ask the city clerk to, well, let's see, I have 8G, Notice of Intent to Enter Into a Development Agreement with West Core. It's a legal notice that has to be given, no act is necessary.
Correct.
And item 8C, An Amendment to the Prefunding Agreement with West Core will be moved to September 11th. Okay, so on the consent agenda, I would ask the city clerk to read them by title only, please.
Item 8A, Supplemental Environment Project, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the Supplemental Environmental Project Round Fields Contract Between the City of Goodyear and Crane Corporation. Item B, Approve a Request from James Bellows for a New Series 6 Liquor License for Estrella Mountain Golf Course located in Estrella Mountain Ranch. Item C is moved to September 11th. Item D, Authorize the City Manager to Enter into a Contract Agreement in the Amount of $174,900 with Matrix Consulting in Order to Conduct a Management Assessment for the City of Goodyear. E, Adopt Resolution 061070, Authorizing the Mayor of Goodyear to Execute an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Avondale and the City of Litchfield Park for the Acceleration of Improvements to Interstate 10 from the Loop 101 to Cerval Avenue. F, Approve a Loan Repayment Agreement between the Arizona Transportation Board and the City of Goodyear to Advance the Design of the Widening of Interstate 10 from the Loop 101 to Cerval Avenue. G, Adopt Resolution 061071, Adopting a Notice of Intent to Enter to Retail Development Agreement Agreement with West Core Goodyear LLC and Globe Land Investors LLC for the Construction of a Regional Shopping Mall on the Northeast Corner of McDowell Road and Bullard Avenue. Item H, A Resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Goodyear Revoking Resolution Number 20061042, Which Authorized the City Manager to Execute an Intergovernmental Agreement with Maricopa County for New Roadway and Bridge Improvements to Cotton Lane from Estrella Parkway to MC 85, Including the New Cotton Lane Bridge Earlier Authorized, to authorize City Manager to Enter into an Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between Maricopa County and the City of Goodyear for New Roadway and Bridge Improvements to Cotton Lane from Estrella Parkway to MC 85, Including the New Cotton Lane Bridge and authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Revised Intergovernmental Agreement with Maricopa County for New Roadway and Bridge Improvements to Cotton Lane from Estrella Parkway to MC 85, Including the New Cotton Lane Bridge Earlier Authorization to authorize City Manager to Enter into an Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between Maricopa County and the City of Goodyear for New Roadway and Bridge Improvements to Cotton Lane from Estrella Parkway to MC 85, Including the New Cotton Lane Bridge. And the resolution number has been, is that the correct resolution number? Okay, that is the correct one. It wasn't in that too.
No, point of correction. Yeah.
You said 1072 though, didn't you?
061072.
I said 1042. No, you changed that with your. That's what I was asking, yes. 107, it became 1072. 1072, Resolution 206, 2006 1072. Right.
And, from the mayor.
Yes, sir.
That's not the complete.
8B.
We're not completed.
The Estrella Mountain Ranch Golf Course, it's not Estrella Mountain Ranch Golf Course, it's the one on Vineyard, not in Estrella Mountain Ranch.
Okay.
It's the municipal golf course.
Does it just say Estrella Golf Course?
Estrella Golf, I don't.
Okay, I got you.
I don't think it's Estrella Mountain. I think it's Estrella Golf Course.
The one at the bottom is not. It's Estrella Mountain Golf Course.
Estrella Mountain Golf Course.
Not Estrella.
It's not in Estrella Mountain Ranch.
So, we would delete the word ranch?
Ranch.
Okay, good catch.
Can we continue on though?
Yes.
Item I, Adopt Resolution 061067, Adopting the Cotton Lane Bridge Cost Sharing Agreement with NNP, IIII, Estrella Mountain Ranch LLC and SunMP LLC. Item J, Adopt Resolution 061069, Adopting a First Amendment to the Goodyear-King Ranch Development Agreement, EP the King LLC.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question on 8E and 8F. It's just a question, I don't think we.
Yeah, proceed with the question.
Pardon?
Proceed with the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What will be the procedure should one of the three cities not be able to meet their financial obligation for this contribution? And the question would probably go to Mr. Salamando, who was.
You know, that probably should be removed from the consent, and we'll get to that. Why don't we, why don't we move, so we're going to remove 8E and F? 8E and F, okay? And the staff will be prepared for that. Okay. Then I would ask for a motion for 8A, B, C, D, G, H.
Not C. Not C.
Not C. A, B, D, G, H, I, J. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier. All those in favor of the motion, no, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
Okay. Mr. Cleveland, would someone respond on 8E and F, please?
Evening, Mayor. Council. Councilmember Sousa. This IGA is for basically funding for the design only, and the cities of Avondale, Litchfield Park have all basically committed funds that they can support in this IGA.
Well, my question was, let's assume that one of them can't in the future meet their obligation. What do we do? Do the two other cities make up the difference, or? That question didn't ask.
No. The cities are obligated to fund. Basically, the interest associated with this project is about $750,000. Goodyear has about 60% of that, but Litchfield Park has 3%, and Avondale has about 40%. And it's just coming out of the general fund, according to the city management. And this is basically an amount that the cities can fund. It's over a period of five years, so it's.
My question?
In their current budget.
Well, my question.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, I think I understand your question. Well, maybe we'll remedy this with your. It is addressed in the agreement that there would first be alternative dispute resolution. There's a 45, I believe it's a 45-bit aquarium on bringing any litigation against one of the other parties to try to get together and work things out. Then there would be alternative dispute resolutions, such as mediation and/or arbitration. If that were not successful, then there are provisions that provide for litigation and.
Well, the only reason I brought the question up is I had a discussion with one of the council members, and I'm not going to name which one, but I congratulated him on supporting this effort on our part. And he says, "Well, that's all well and good, but now all we have to do is find a way to pay for it." That's the reason I have this concern, and the question I put to you. I'm satisfied with your explanation. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on E and F? Could I have a motion for 8E and 8F, please?
Motion to accept, H, E, and F.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Councilmember Lord. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
7-0, passed.
Okay, we're now going to move to the business part of our agenda, and we have many people here this evening on Agenda Items 1 and 2. Before we start, are we getting, can you hear in the hallway? You can't. Okay. All right, and there's no more seating here. Any more chairs anywhere? Okay. Here's one right here, two. There's two here. Well, that one, just one.
Just one.
One.
Take your stand.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to Agenda Item 9A, Consider the GM Consulting Contract. The item was continued from the July 10, 2006 meeting. Item 9A and 9B will be discussed together. 9A and 9B. And Mr. Cleveland will present for staff.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item comes before you as a continuation from a previous meeting. The request before you this evening is to provide direction as to the GM Consulting, Gail Rusing, as a retail consultant. As you know, there are two items here, both of them being consolidated for discussion purposes. The first item was in terms of amending the existing contract, changing the functional activities. The second option before you is exercising the contract right of termination of the contract with a 14-day notice. Or the third item before you this evening is to leave the contract as is. At this time, staff is prepared to answer any questions, and I believe there are a number of people that wish to speak to this matter.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we move to public comment, are there cards on this?
Yes, they came in after the meeting started.
Can I have them? Thank you. Okay. Mr. Rusing, I'm going to leave it up to you for the sequence here. We have David Cooper, Craig Martin, and you. How would you like to do that?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. It's nice to be here this evening. I am looking forward to this presentation. I am looking forward to the evening of votes and to great public participation, which is the way this should be. And I shall be using Elmo. I have not, I have not used Elmo for about four years, but I think I remember how. Can you all see this, or do we need to zoom it in?
Can you zoom it in?
It's a little clearer.
Looks better.
Well, that basically just says that it is a presentation to the City of Goodyear from GM Consulting, and that is the stylistic logo that we used to use in retail attraction with the City of Goodyear. I am Gail Rusing. I was for two and a half years the retail attraction certified economic developer for the City of Goodyear. I left the City of Goodyear to go to Greater Yuma Economic Development Corporation for a wonderful opportunity there, where I was president and CEO. I will speak more about that later. But right now, I would like to tell you that when it occurred to the mayor, to Mayor Kavanaugh, that I should possibly be back at the city, it was definitely because he had the best interests of the city at heart. While I was here, we were extremely successful with retail attraction. When I was no longer here, we weren't. That is not necessarily anybody's fault, simply that a couple of people came in and left, and came in and left. It is a difficult job, and you have to be the right person for the job in order to be successful at it. The mayor suggested that possibly we might try to get Gail back, which is very humbling. I was heavily recruited to Yuma. The mayor did try to get me to stay when I was here, but it was too good an opportunity to pass up on, then I was recruited back. Any professional is going to be very happy with a circumstance like that, and I was delighted at the opportunity to come back to the City of Goodyear because I very much enjoyed working here before. I had a meeting with city manager, the HR director, and the mayor and his assistant. At that meeting, it was decided if I were to come back quickly, which is what the mayor really wanted, because he felt it was somewhat urgent with all that was happening in the way of retail development, the HR director suggested it would have to be as a consultant if we were going to do it quickly. And this is the way it's normally done in the public sector. I actually began as a consultant when I first came to the City of Goodyear. Unfortunately, the word consultant changed somewhere along the line, and I was no longer a contract employee when I came back, which is what I thought I would be. When I saw the contract, I was somewhat alarmed because I had to get insurance, and I had to supply all of my own things, and I had to do this and do that, and it was very involved. I talked with both this city manager and the mayor and said, "I'm concerned about this." They said, "Don't worry about it, Gail. We'll get it worked out, but we need you here now. Please come, and we'll get it figured out." In faith, I came. I have done everything in faith all my life, because I really believe if you have a heavy-duty contract and everything on paper, something can go awry anyways. Well, it certainly can. I had unanimous approval from this city council when I came here. I was welcomed with open arms. Those of you who may have been here recall the applause for my coming back to the community. I was highly honored. Shortly after that, everything seemed to go downhill. Apparently, it started with a bus trip. I don't know. Maybe it started with a trip to DC. I don't know where it began, but it began somewhere. All of a sudden, I became the football in a political game. And I don't know if you're familiar with that expression, "Be the ball!" But you don't want to be. It's not fun, not at all. It may sound really cool, but it's not. The first thing that happened was I made a presentation as council that was the very first thing on my scope of work, the scope of work that was designed for me and very improperly and inadequately put together. The very first thing, said that I must develop, sorry, the second thing, a white paper that defines quality retail, present it to the city council in a work session, and then ask for city council action. Well, I stand here before you tonight to tell you that my white paper was not well-received by the council because I considered it very important that it be word-for-word, just like the State of the State address that the president makes. I took it that seriously. So I read the white paper. That was not well-accepted. But the really bad thing is, my presentation, which, by the way, I have made when I have taught retail attraction, was considered to be demeaning. And I'm sorry about that. That is not a good thing. I don't want anybody to feel demeaned, as I have felt demeaned by this group on occasions since. Here is what the city manager and I put together that I was to tell you that night. Now, I don't have all the notes, but I do have these little squiggles that indicate infrastructure, amenities, things like this. Now, apparently, there was a misunderstanding because supposedly the economic development director had already told you all of this. I wasn't here, I don't know, and maybe the city manager wasn't at that meeting. But there was apparently a definite misunderstanding. So I continued on. I'm an economic developer. I keep going. In economic development, you've got a chance at a project until you've heard three noes, and you keep going. You also know it's not a project. It's not successful until it's vertical because something can go wrong anytime along the line. Well, some of the things that started going wrong, unfortunately, were things that went straight to the media. Now, some of those came from council meetings, but some definitely did not. And I don't know just where they came from, but since Councilman Sousa has mentioned that I did not defend myself, and he was concerned about that because I did not answer these, and I said, "I don't want to air any dirty laundry like is being done in this city. I am proud of this city. I'm a resident again. I bought another home. I love this city, and I do not want to see it put through the wringer." Unfortunately, since this has happened anyways, me just being the football, I have to set the record straight. First thing was about my quote, "negative work record" with the city. So I'm quickly going to show you these. I don't want to bore you, but these are every one of the comments on my performance reviews. You will see all the way through them. Congratulations, 5% increase. Convert to project manager, congratulations. Gail's a valuable asset to the city, 5% increase. And now let's get to these. These are of particular significance. Gail has provided significant impact to the community with the department's retail attraction program. Recommend 5% increase. That was written by my supervisor, Brian Dahlke. Then, "Congratulations, Gail. Appreciate your hard work and commitment to excellence." That was written by the city manager. This isn't sounding like a negative work record, is it? The last one that I will give you, and they're all here, and you can check the records. They're all here. "Congratulations, Gail. Appreciate all your hard work. Look forward to Walmart, many more retail stores. Stephen Cleveland." All of my performance reviews were very good. I'm not saying there were never any negatives on. I wish I had ever done a performance review for any one of my employees that I did not have to give one negative on. We did 360-degree performance reviews in the organization that I was CEO of, and so of course, somebody had a negative. Now, let's get into more specific comments, and I will be quick, but I am setting the record straight. And for those of you from the press, if you would like to report something that is true, documented, I will be happy to give you copies of these. They were available in my records. Somehow, you didn't find any of those. You only found the one negative. Gail strives towards projecting a positive image for the city. She represents the city in several aspects, and I routinely hear positive comments about her. For example, GPEC recently had several site selection consultants in town. Gail provided an overview of Goodyear to these individuals, and the feedback provided to me by GPEC staff and the Peoria Economic Development Group staff was very positive. They stated that Gail was very professional and informative as well as entertaining. Sorry, I can't be real entertaining tonight. It's a tough issue. It is clear that Gail takes pride in the city's assets and accomplishments. She puts in the time it takes to get the job done, routinely working more than a conventional 40-hour work week. She attends evening and weekend functions on behalf of the city. Gail is willing to jump in and assist in virtually any project. She asks questions if she doesn't understand her role and works hard to accomplish her respective tasks. Well, let's get to some of the retail. Gail has emerged as one of the top retail economic development professionals in the state. The city's economic development program for retail attraction was written up in the Small Cities publication in the League of Cities and Towns. She has made presentations to two community groups in the past year regarding the city's retail promotion and activity. She recently met with management of the city of Rio Rancho in Mexico, provided training in retail attraction, and has been asked to present a retail attraction program for the California Association for Local Economic Development. Gail provides marketing support and development for the department. In the past year, she has created and/or coordinated the production of aerial maps, collateral material covers, and advertising specialty products. Several departments, in addition to ED, are benefiting from her promotional materials. The city's trade exhibit, conceptualized and designed by Gail, continues to draw attention at the International Council of Shopping Centers, Western Division Conference and Deal-Making Session. Okay, then, my, oh, yeah, this is the last one. By this time, I had been here for quite some time, and this actually is just, unfortunately, a couple of months before I chose to leave. Gail continues to be a major force in the attraction of retail and hospitality businesses to Goodyear. Retail and hospitality is important to the city of Goodyear. In the past, she has, I'll skip by all of the things she has done. Gail is considered one of the top retail economic development professionals in Arizona. She was interviewed by an author for a textbook, some of these things I'd forgotten about, for downtown redevelopment and retail attraction. And one thing that I should also add. Gail is hardworking, hard-driving, a good employee that takes great pride in the city and the work she performs. She is creative and technically superior in the area of retail business recruitment. The department director recognized Gail with a certificate of achievement at the city's employment summit. The impact of Gail's efforts is incredibly valuable to the city. That goes on and on about that, but this is important. Gail is diligently attending the University of Phoenix to obtain her undergraduate degree in business and marketing. This requires substantial commitment, especially given the demands of her job. When I started with the city of Goodyear, I had, I don't know, maybe a year of college, had more than that in my high school years, but that doesn't count when you come into another country. I decided to go back to school on my own because I love learning. I had done a lot of learning, but I'd never actually done anything that was going down on paper, and I decided I should do that in case I wanted to be advanced. I had been told it would work positively for me if I had my degree. I worked at that, got excellent grades, worked all the way through it while I was doing these 40-plus hours for the city. But then I went to Yuma, and that program was not available, so I had to stop. I am going to do it again. And I am an absolutely huge advocate of post-secondary education, both in my daughters. One is a pediatric cardiologist, the other one is a PhD candidate. We believe in our family, in education. I married young, and my priority was my daughters, and I'm proud because they're wonderful girls, and that, too, is a contribution to our community. So where are we now? Well, it looks as though maybe the press thought that a little bit wrong. Negative work record, no regard for education. So with all of this negativism going on, some from people in upper management, some from council, also some fabulous support, the rank-and-file personnel at the city of Goodyear is very supportive of me, and for that, I'm truly grateful. In spite of that, I've been trying to work. It's not easy, but the people who know me out there, developers, the contractors, the architects, the brokers, know that this is hogwash. So they are still working with me, but I am a little concerned about the projects I'm working on coming to this council for incentives when this is not a functioning city council. I'm very concerned about that. I used to be very proud of this council. So I've continued to work. I have been working with, quote, "a high-end grocer," and the reason that one's so important to me is because while Barbara Moss was here doing retail, this quote came through loud and clear. Now, I can't tell you what it is, so I can only go like this very, very quickly. Oh, yeah, well, you can at least have a quick glimpse. If you can read quickly, you can see it. This is a quote from the retail survey that was done, and Barbara says, "This is my personal favorite, and I did not change the font size. This is an actual reprint. It was a big font. There is only one critical business establishment missing that is a prerequisite to getting Goodyear on the map as a destination place to live. As a person moving to Goodyear from the city of Phoenix and within a mile of blank, I am willing to trust in the judgment of the capable economic development staff on all issues after this one is taken care of. I believe the economic incentive program should be specially designed with this in mind. This was a good citizen of the city of Goodyear participating." This is their words. So that's the one I'm working on. Along with, that was not the number-one choice. The number-one choice had even more votes than that one, and I'm working on it, too. Now, I will tell you, the first one that we're just talking about, I've had great success with. A neighboring community has said they will give $300,000 to get that particular grocer here. They voted for that. I asked about an incentive for this particular grocer who is planning to tour with me after Labor Day, and I was given the impact assessment form and told, "They have to, you know you have to get this all filled out. You have to find out the sewer size, how much money they're going to bring in, how many employees they'll have, how many square feet. That is no way to bring in a client. If the neighboring community is giving 300, we've got to at least match them, and we're going to have that back 18-fold in five years. 300,000 is not a lot of money." But I would not be able to feel comfortable bringing that to this council because I don't know that I would have the support, and that's a really uncomfortable position to be in, especially when I'm the one getting the tour. And I'm getting it because of those contacts I have built over 10 years, being in the development business myself, family business. I didn't do it. And then two and a half years here, and even more of them when I was in Yuma. We did not work with retail because I was a GPEC person. I was Barry Broom. We didn't work with retail, but the city still needed retail. And so the city came to me and said, "Will you help us get the redevelopment done on South Gate Mall?" So I did. Worked for Forest City. They bought the mall. We're hoping they'll redo it. I was asked to go down to Santa Luis in the south of the county to just get the two parties at the table because a Walmart was looking at coming in, and you know what Walmart can do to a community. I participated in that. Wasn't part of my job description, but like this says, I jump in and do it if it needs to be done. So that's where we are. We are just letting the other cities go ahead, write the incentives, get somebody out there, sell the community, and we're just arguing about who should be doing it. You are going to be making a vote tonight, and I can tell you, the best vote for the city of Goodyear, if you can put aside everything else, the best vote for the city of Goodyear and for the benefit of this community is going to be to redo the contract that I have so it enables me to work and not to spend my whole life reporting and trying to explain why I'm here. It would be very helpful to this community if you did that, if your heart is with the community, as Mayor Kavanaugh's was when he talked to the city manager and they pulled me out of Yuma. That's what you will do. I thank you for your time.
My name is Craig Martin. I'm an attorney. I represent Gail. I just wanted to come in and suggest that you should, as the city council, not make decisions based on what's in the newspaper, but based on what's in front of you. The other thing is that I'm not here to threaten a lawsuit, quite the opposite. Gail has no desire to tangle with the city, but I will tell you that at one point, she asked me that whether she would have a claim if the city terminated her contract, and I thought you ought to know what I told her at the time. What I said was that you were recruited to come here, you came here, you were not given the tools to do the job. You weren't given an office, you weren't given access to the city infrastructure, you weren't given the ability to gather city support from getting reports and assistance. There is a theory in the law called an implied covenant of good faith and fair dealing, and it appears to me that what happened to Gail is that some people in the city did not act in good faith to give her a chance. As a result, it appeared to me that the city breached, by terminating this contract, could be making itself liable by breaching a contract when it didn't, when it breached the covenant of good faith and fair dealing by setting her up for failure, which is what some people have done from when she came. That's not why I'm here. I'm not here to threaten. Gail said it all, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, so Mr. Cooper, Judge Cooper, will not be speaking, is that correct?
Leave speaking.
Okay.
No, that's fine. I'm not saying.
Okay, is there, you don't have any other cards on this one, D, I believe?
No, just the ones I gave you.
Okay, so we'll move on and to, are there any other comments from the public? Okay.
Good evening.
Yes.
Actually, my card is still down in the card tray. I plan to just take a look at Miss Rusing's contract and on the later issue.
Okay. You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Annette Bretner, and I live at 18185 West Santa Alberta Lane. I have previously come before this council regarding such matters as the building of a dog park and the relocation of the Loop 303. I am here this evening regarding Mayor Jim Kavanaugh, and I'll discuss that later, and Miss Rusing's contract. One of the mayor's campaign promises was to review how the city operated and to make sure it ran efficiently and had a fiduciary responsibility to its citizens. I have been a taxpayer in Goodyear for over six years. In that time, and I've seen little recently in the way of progressive economic development. While heaven and down with other surrounding cities have flourished and lured many businesses and upper-scale retail, I have seen a baseball stadium and a more upscale plan for King Ranch go by the wayside because of obstacles set by the city's manager and employees. I have attended numerous meetings on the city center, but have yet to see any construction begin. In my mind, outside blood was and is still needed, a jumpstart of your accuracy that has stagnated too long and has not been responsive to the citizens or elected officials of Goodyear for more than two decades. Mayor Kavanaugh's work to bring Miss Rusing back as a consultant was an attempt to address this stagnation in city management, and I will retain the rest of my comments for a later issue.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Do you have a card?
Dave Cornwall. This is on one.
This is on one, yes. And, Mayor, members of the council, staff, my name is David Cornwall, Sontara Partners. We are the managing partner for King Ranch and the Lakeland Properties, soon to become in For You, and a project we call Cliffs 44. I was advised by the entire world not to talk on this subject, but you know what? I don't care. I'm here, I've been doing this for over 20 years, and when I first started talking about the King Ranch way back when, we had a somewhat different council. We certainly had a different attitude and staff. And I remember after Steve Earl, my zoning attorney, got up and spoke for quite some time, I wanted to get up and say, "You know, this project just misses one thing. It misses all of you on our team so we can put together an exquisitely good project." That all turned around when just a few little things happened. I got this council right here. We had a little change in staff. I was able to communicate with what I think, I've been doing this for over 20 years in zoning and developing property, and I think without a doubt, the most intelligent, progressive city council and mayor I've ever been around and staff, they have worked with us incredibly well. And there's no doubt in my mind that if you all continue to put forth the city's interests first and foremost, and maybe first and foremost, and maybe ignore some of these other issues, the city of Goodyear has every opportunity to be the most successful city in the state of Arizona, hands down. But you've got to continue to do that. You are a great council, a great mayor, and a great staff, and you've got to continue to work on those planes. And I hope you can put the rest of this behind you. And if I just committed development, suicide, so be it. Thank you.
Again, we're still on the Gail Rusing contract.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Paul Smiley. I am a resident of Goodyear, Arizona, for the last six years. I'm a retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel, and I'm a defense contractor. My comment today is based on the signs I see in front of me. As my elected officials and my staff of the city, there's one thing I expect: integrity. Integrity is a pretty simple definition for me. It is doing what's right, even when it's not popular to do so. So, a friend of mine, who's a business associate in Chicago, he doesn't have a nameplate on his desk. He has the word integrity. Integrity, I think, sets this city apart and our staff and all citizens apart from other cities. I am proud to be a city resident here in Goodyear. I am proud to serve my country in the Air Force for 25 years. And my expectation for this city council and for this staff is to take this city to the next level. And when you get up in the morning, your decisions today on this issue and other issues, think integrity. Think what is right, regardless of what is popular to do so. And we will be a very successful city. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Again, it's on the Gail Rusing contract. This is strictly on the Gail Rusing retail consultant contract.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
My name is Andrew Best. I'm a resident of Goodyear, a very happy resident of Goodyear. Been out here three years. I'm a native Arizonan. I have 34 years' experience in law enforcement administration. And I know that one of the key factors in administration of any difficult, complex organization is the ability of the chief executive officer to select his staff. And from what I've seen and what I've read about this situation is that, for the good of the order and the good of the city, which I plan to live for a long time, is that that contract should go forward. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further comment on one? One.
I don't know if I'll comment on one, two, three, four.
Well, we need to know, because we're going to get to two.
What am I on?
You're on two.
You said two.
Okay.
Number one.
Number one is on Gail Rusing's contract. Number two is on investigating the mayor. Okay, so if it's Gail Rusing contract is number one.
Can I comment on one?
First of all, I'd like to thank Miss Rusing for a wonderful presentation. Never had a chance to meet you before. I think, as I think about this whole thing, I work down, some of the stuff that I do, as you well know, let me apologize a minute and say, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Would you state your name, please?
Yeah, Ken Going. And I'm at 15944 West Pinchot Avenue, Goodyear, Arizona 85338. I want to get that in. I only got a minute. I am involved a lot with, as you well know, with the county issues, and I work with the county and everything. And I just like it when I go down to the county now, and I'm beginning to be asked, "What in the heck is wrong with the mayor? What in the heck is wrong with the city of Goodyear?" People have asked me questions, "Is this woman qualified?" And I can honestly say, "I don't know. For one day, she is; one day, she isn't. One day, she is; one day, she isn't." Has there been anybody else put on the docket to be interviewed? As far as I know, no. I mean, I consider her presentation tonight fantastic, but that doesn't mean there isn't others out there who could do the equal job. I just don't understand how you would pay $100,000 without having somebody interviewed to find out that you are picking the right person. Where has it led us to? It has led us to embarrassment, as I said before I go to city meetings, I go to council meetings out in Maricopa County, and kind of ridicule with the way your city is run. You know that, Mr. Mayor, the respect of the people I know to have of you, I would hope they keep that same respect. But to see this thing getting in the newspapers, the way it's getting in the papers, and it's leading from one thing to another thing, to another thing, to another thing, and there's an old saying, "Watch what you ask for, you just might get it." Or there's another old saying, "You can fool some of the people all the time, you can fool all the people some of the time, but you're not going to fool all the people all the time." And I think some of the editorials that were written by people, which I think were completely ridiculous, the only good thing about that editorial is I had an editorial on the other end of it, which bounced out the bookends, and then I realized that my end was stronger than the end on the left. And that's all I've got to say on item one. But I really think that the council has just much right to vote nay as they do vote yea.
Okay, thank you. Any other further comments on one, Gail Rusing contract?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Richard Kirschbaum. I live in Pebble Creek and also a board member of the Chamber of Commerce for Southwest Valley. I'm confused on the point where my understanding is that the entire council agreed to hire Gail verbally, and then from there, it went south. So, I would just like a clarification as to why she was approved verbally and now is disapproved.
I'll try to shed some light on that, if I may. I actually did miss one thing in the presentation. I didn't think it was going to be that important. But apparently, what happened was, first of all, a $100,000 contract when you're paying absolutely everything yourself, you're earning from taxes, you even have to buy a computer that is suitable, you can't use the city's computers, all these things. I was earning $90,000 in Greater Yuma, plus I got a $10,000 bonus for performance. I earned more money essentially there than I did here. And I keep hearing about this $15,000 expense account. Those expenses are the same expenses that normally come out of the Economic Development Department. It's nothing special. And what happened, in order to insert a wedge when somebody, I don't know who, but when somebody was deliberately using this issue to create a conflict within the council, which I find lacking integrity, was my performance in Yuma. There were rumors, and as a matter of fact...
Could I call a point of order, please?
Yes.
How long was this? I mean, was it only one answer? There's only one question, and she's elaborating, so I just want to...
I am answering the question. Thank you, Councilman Lord.
Are we going to let this go on, or is it...
I think she's trying to answer the question from Richard Kirschbaum. Is that correct?
And I did not ask...
Mayor, I unwave.
No.
No.
I'm sorry. My very significant other person is really concerned about this, and I've asked him, "Please to not speak." It was stated by Councilmember Holland, in the minutes which I asked to not have authenticated, that they were, that I was, quote, "fired" by Yuma. Those went into the public record. I asked that it not happen, but I did not want, Councilman Sousa, I did not want to bring all of this up, which ended up happening anyways. So, here's one more point, and I believe this is the only thing that can have happened, because even Councilman Sousa was asked by the Yuma Sun about this issue. I woke up on Sunday morning in Yuma. I was there that weekend, and I was still in the friggin' paper. It didn't matter what I did, I was in the paper. And it used to be in the Yuma paper for all the wonderful things we did. So, let's look at them.
Well, we've got to get to the question. Is this answering your question, Richard? No? Okay.
Well, do you want me to?
I would like to know.
What happened? Okay, this will answer it for you.
They hired you, and now they're saying...
This will answer it for you, because one faction was saying I was fired. Sousa said, "City staffers felt they had been bypassed. They felt it was going against the grain and would usurp their authority," Sousa said. So, let's go on to what they asked Jim Valenzuela, the president of, sorry, the chairman of Greater Yuma, D.C. "Rusing was responsible for coming up with a new logo and a rebound marketing effort, which brought in more sponsorships and private investors and increased the profile of the organization." I'm not going to go through all this...
No, we can't.
Lots of it. He said, "Face it, we are no comparison to the Phoenix metropolitan area. Gail is from that area. I can't answer for her reasons wanting to go back. We pulled her out, and she went back." That's it. All of it began with, "Why did Gail leave Yuma?" And a lot of conjecture about it. Thank you.
And that's a valid point, Mr. Kirschbaum, that there was differing views on that subject. Okay, I think seeing no more public comment, we'll move to the council and give each person an opportunity. Let's start over on the right with Councilmember Holland. No, wait, I need a motion first. So, let's move to get a motion.
Proceedsually, Mayor, can you explain, are we taking 9A and 9B together, just assuming that 9A is now 9B1?
Yes.
Are we going to remove 9A from the agenda and address it through 9B1, 2, and 3?
I think that's sensible, frankly.
Mr. Councilman, are they both the same subject matter?
Yeah. Okay. So, if you would make a motion...
That we amend the agenda?
Yes.
Is that the proper motion that you need, or...
You can just make a motion for an action item. I don't believe you need to amend your agenda. Take them both simultaneously.
I wanted to get the procedural question out of the way before we get into that. I'm good. Unless you need a motion to strike 9A.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I do need a motion, though, for whatever action you're going to recommend. Can we do that? Are you ready to do that, Councilmember Antoniak? Would you rather someone else make a motion?
Sure. I'm happy to do it, because I reflect my actions. I move that we approve item 9B, number two, exercise the contractual right to terminate the contract on 14-day notice.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion to terminate the contract...
And then I'd like to...
14-day notice. From Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Lord. Councilmember Antoniak.
And I think it's important that I explain my rationale, and with all due respect, Miss Rusing's presentation this evening was definitely informative, as was the one we had back in June in what was supposed to be an executive session. And there are issues that I think need to be resolved, that as a council member, I need to commit to the public and to you, that will get resolved. That said, notwithstanding, the way in which we, as a council, took the action originally, I personally do regret not asking more questions. I wish I had had the discussion about whether or not we had a request for a proposal on the street, or a request for qualifications, and had vetted the discussion that has since been vetted over the last 90 days. I think you stated in your comments, we owe the public a very public dialogue, and that is, quite frankly, what I'd like to see happen. I'd like to see us reengage management staff on economic development issues. I think there's definitely issues of import in that discussion. There's issues that need to be resolved, whether they be morale, whether they be staffing, whether they be circumstances, as they are now, or results that we need to get as a council and as a public body or citizens within the city of Goodyear. You said it yourself, you don't like being in the football. Sometimes the football gets taken out of the game, and a new one gets brought in. That new one might get replaced with the same one that was being played before. First-down ball might be the same third-down ball. And I'm willing to give you that cut, I'm willing to give you that chance, but at this point in time, I'm feeling, as a council member, if I start as much needed, and that we need to have a very open public dialogue once again on this issue, here in this chamber, if need be, on the record, with our manager, with our legal staff, with you engaged as a member of the public, even helping set up the requests for the qualifications and the proposal, if need be, although there's probably legal ramifications to you being involved in that if we decide to put a request on the street. I don't question whether or not you're the best or the brightest in this case. I just feel I owe the public a dialogue that hasn't come, and that needs to start today.
Okay, let's, Councilmember Holland.
I just wanted to make a comment, because I know that you said that Councilmember Holland inserted the fact that you had been fired into the minutes. The reason that I did that was because during the meeting that we had with the mayor, we thought it was going to be an executive session. It turned out to be the public session, if you remember correctly, was because that was the first time I had heard that that incident had occurred in Yuma, the mayor that you had been fired. Now, bear with me. Bear with me. Point of order.
Excuse me, Mayor. I do object to this when the audience participates and responds when a councilperson is speaking. And I would prefer that that stopped at this time.
Okay, Councilmember Holland, Mayor, I would just ask my peers to have their comments reflect the motion that's on the table.
Yeah, and that's a good point. I was just concerned about them knowing that where we had heard it from had been from the mayor. I thought that also, we had talked about opening a permanent position for this, which also means that what Councilman Antoniak is talking about is giving this second chance, and it sounded like it was the right way to go. And I would probably support this.
I missed that ending.
I said, "And I will support this."
Support the motion. Is that what you said?
Because we have talked about opening up a permanent position.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scott.
Yes, a couple of comments here. First of all, I've only been on this council three years. I've not seen any conflict like the one we're going through now. This is a first. And let me tell you, it's also a first time that our fine mayor, who's done an excellent job till now, got very involved, in my opinion, in what would be considered management and administrative affairs. This should have been handled, in my opinion, by the city manager. It was not. It got to be a real problem. It continues to be a problem. And I agree with exactly what my colleague to the left said, Mr. Antoniak. I think it's time to clear the air and start over here. I will definitely support this motion that's on the floor.
Councilmember Lord.
Well, it's unfortunate, Gail, that this had to take place and that we've gotten to this point. And I take somewhat of the responsibility for that. And that's for the night that the mayor called me on the phone to tell me about this person that he thought would be great for Goodyear. I didn't ask enough questions. I didn't ask your qualifications. I didn't know he was going to call the rest of the council. I thought it was sort of going to be his idea or recommendation to the city manager. When I was voted in, I had no idea that we would be actually hiring somebody from a recommendation from this council. And that's what happened that night when he called each one of us. He got a recommendation, so that when he went to the city manager, he went with a great deal of power. Rather than going to the city manager and saying, "I know we need somebody to fill this position. I would like you to consider Gail Rusing for me. She's coming up, she's going to be available. I would like her to be among other people who would be interviewed for this job." And I think that's where it broke down. And so, and I also think when they brought you in, because they did not inform the other departments correctly, they did not do it in the manner that most businesses would have done. It caused a lot of consternation. So, look where we are. It's gone from one thing to the other. So, I laid that on the shoulders of the mayor and the process that he took. And that's why we have a separation in this government, that we make policy decisions and resolutions, and that man in the blue shirt is the city manager, and he runs the administrative part of the city. And when we get into his pockets, this is an... And when we get into his pockets, this is an end result of what we have. So, I'm sorry that you've had to go through some of these things. I'm sorry about the talk that went around, but I want it to be known, Gail, I only heard one thing before that meeting. Your mayor exposed everything else at that meeting that night that I personally didn't want to hear. Thank you.
Mayor? Vice Mayor?
Sitting here thinking all the, about what we have done, what the decisions we've made, how it's impacted where this council is today. Number one, every council member stated that they wanted, that they, they stated yes when the mayor asked them if they, if we should bring Gail Rusing on board. Some of them probably didn't have the experience and the knowledge about Gail Rusing. I have. I've known Gail Rusing since 1996. I've known what she's done. All those commercial businesses on Litchfield Road, all of the businesses that came in here after and during the time Gail was here is a credit to her work. When Gail did a presentation to our, at our work session, what I heard from these council members was that they liked the presentation and what they heard was very good and they appreciated her coming before us and speaking to us. And of course, then they added the bit, "Why wasn't this done through economic development?" But the point was, they liked what they heard. They voted with the mayor's consent. When the mayor asked them, they voted for this. We took it back to council, we ratified it at council, and now they say they're going to vote against keeping Gail on. I'm reaching a point where can we trust the integrity of this council to make decisions that are proper for the city of Goodyear? They can't seem to make the decisions properly. I, I am concerned that you can't follow through and say one thing and carry it through to the end with compliments and everything else. And now, all of a sudden, let's get rid of her. I'm sorry, I cannot support this motion.
With all, with all due respect to the folks that don't necessarily support my comments or and/or support other people's comments, I would ask, Mayor, that you advise the public of how we typically go about doing business at our meetings and that regardless of whether they support you or don't support you, that they show that in a manner that we can get our meeting done in an efficient manner, in a timely manner this evening.
It is recommended by Councilmember Antoniak that you not demonstrate your support for or against any particular position. We could be here all night. No, we can't, we can't.
You have that ability there too.
Yes. There's, there's a lot of hard feelings here and I, I still, I still need to talk to, so, and then a few attacks, we'll try to minimize that stuff. We've got to get through this. Councilmember Sussing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, on this issue, I have been fooled from here to there. And what I'm going to say at the present time is not going to be pleasing to many of you in this gathering. I have been very supportive of Ms. Gail Rusing since learning of her departure as chief executive of the Greater Yuma Economic Development Corporation. Since late in March of this year, I have received numerous emails from executives of firms that Gail has worked with, CEOs like her former boss, Jim Valenzuela, who stated that much was accomplished during her tenure with GYEDC. Continuing, he further stated, "We have a tremendous task record, track record in the past two years and Gail was a part of it." Glenn McGinnis, CEO of Arizona Clean Fuels Yuma LLC, compliments Gail on her procurement of a pipe supply line between Mexico and Yuma County. The plant will be the first refinery to be built in the United States in decades. Ian Clarken, Copper State Consulting Group, describes Gail as a top-notch professional, skilled in top-level negotiations. She's an individual who goes above and beyond when involved in projects she's, she's responsible for. The city's contract with GM Consulting has been in place for the last four months and in these four months, the city council has been mired in controversy surrounding the position Ms. Rusing was contracted to fulfill. During this period, it has, it has become increasingly clear, despite Ms. Rusing's professional background and the plot that she received from former clients, that retail recruitment does not lend itself to an outside consultant relationship, at least during Goodyear. It has failed in the past four months because of the close inter, interrelationship that exists between it and the other city departments associated with economic development. It is a role that becomes most effective when it is an integral part of the established in-house organization. Frankly, the outside consulting position is not performing as expected. Where do we put the blame? That's a question that is yet to be answered or determined. Economic development is very important to this city and because of this controversy has come to a serious stalemate. I hope that Ms. Rusing during the course of these procedures would have heated editorials calling for her resignation. That would have been beneficial to her personally and as well as the city. That has not been the case. It is my personal opinion that in order for this council to get back on track and regain its stature in this community, the council and staff must put aside their petty bickering and get back to the job of governing the business of this city, the city that I love so much. For this reason, oh, rather, to begin this process, after serious deliberation over the vacation period that we've just come back off of, I'm going to have to vote no on amending the existing contract with GM Consulting and will extend that vote in supporting the termination of the contract. I'm sorry to say that, but I think we must move forward and the only way we can is by this action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Just a few final comments on this and I'd like to take a minute. I did write some comments and I'll refer to those in part, but I, I think it's important that although it's, it's related to the motion, that, that we have certainly been in the public eye over the last several months on this subject and I would, I would like to, I have never really expressed my, my rationale for the actions that I've taken. So, I'd like to do that. However, I will not penetrate the meetings we had. I, I don't think that's helpful to us. But I, I knew Gail Rusing when she worked in Goodyear. I didn't know her very well, but I did know, I just came on as mayor just before she left. But I knew there were three or four major improvements in retail in the city of Goodyear and in every one of those, she was directly involved. She brought them here. She didn't wait for a developer to bring them, she brought them herself. So, I really thought highly of Gail Rusing. She left for really a better job in Yuma. And however, since she's been gone, economic development has not, in two years, has not hired a retail person. They've hired people to fill that bullet. One was a redevelopment person and another was a, not economic development at all. Both of these were very fine women, but they weren't qualified in retail. And they left and so have many other, several other people in economic development over the last couple of years. So, I felt like we needed someone in there, you know, I'll say why in a second. And Gail Rusing, I found out was available, so I, I moved to see if I can urge the city manager and others to, let's look at Gail. I, I should say that it wasn't just retail that we were sort of hurting for in Goodyear. Over the last year, we've lost 1,000 jobs in this city. And in the same time period, I think Yuma has one of, leads the nation in the growth rate of jobs on a capital basis. This is a crucial time in the history of Goodyear and I mean that sincerely. In 2008, we're going to make a major move in commercial. We're going to have a regional mall, we're going to have several smaller malls that are approaching 800, 900,000 square feet. We're going to have a city center which we need to start moving on. We've been stymied in retail for automobile dealers for quite some time. This is the time where we have to be proactive if we want to be top drawer. That's the question. How good do we want to be? And we're facing competition. Avondale is competitive out there now. They are definitely competitive, 115th Avenue, Avondale Avenue. Buckeye is competitive in Verrado and Sundance. They weren't competitive at all before. We've got a huge upscale, upscale commercial that center along 101. You know about that, where the ball fields are? That is going to be huge. And we can take on the auto mall, struggle on that. So, we are on the verge of a significant increase in the West Valley in commercial. Where do we want to be in that? I want to be in the lead. And unless we act with vigor, the competition is going to clean our clock, quite candidly. And lacking that vigor, we are unwittingly abandoning the decisions associated with quality to private developers. We have great private developers in Goodyear, but these people come with 10 other developments. We're just one in a pocket of requirements for them. They're good, but their requirements are much broader than ours. And they have a specific need, it's called Goodyear. So, if we want to be something, a city of retail chains and grow as the gurus in Scottsdale and Phoenix think we should, at this particular level of meeting income and this number of folks, this is what you should get. Gail doesn't believe that and neither do I. We need to stake our claim to upscale now. We have to be proactive. We have to have the courage to go out to developers and say, "We're good and we're going to tell you why." And you put the statistics away because we have rationale that indicates to us and we can prove to you that you need to bring in the AJ's, the Nordstoms, the Whole Foods and the others sooner than you otherwise intended to. We need a person that has the courage to do that. That's why I wanted Gail. Basically, that's what it's all about. We have a history here of waiting for people to come to us, which is fine. We need that type of reaction in some cases, but we don't have a person to market us. That's why I wanted Gail. She's good at that. Gail is optimistic, energetic, you've seen her, knowledgeable, confident and professional and she'll move and get us done, get us on the board in the way I think we need to be and I think many of you do also. Although I originally wanted, and this responds to Mr. Goings' comment and others, Mr. Antoniak's, although I originally wanted to, her to come on board as a hire, HR thought it better and they were correct and I supported their recommendation to come on at least initially as a contract consultant. That was accomplished in late March and, and that contract consultant resulted from a recommendation from the HR director with the city manager, me and Gail Rusing in this office of mine. And that's when it came up and I supported that. Disturbingly, in the, no one in a responsible position within the city has ever corrected the repeated allegations by at least one newspaper that I hired Ms. Rusing, that she was hired without her job being posted effectively, denying others the right to apply. For the record, Ms. Rusing was not hired, but rather brought on board as a consultant with a one-year agreement, which either party could and tonight is going to terminate and given a two-week notice. That could have been done at any time. Neither the contract per se nor the money allocated to the contract prohibited the hiring of a full-time employee for retail. And for this, and for the record, I have never hired anyone as the mayor of the city of Goodyear. In fact, there isn't a single person who works directly for me in the city of Goodyear. I have assistants, they report to the city manager. We're on the threshold of a lifetime opportunity in my mind, I try to make that clear. Gail Rusing was available and affordable and $100,000 contract is probably around 80, 70, 80 on a regular job in Goodyear because of all the benefits that accrue to a employee. And one day after we approved it, everything unraveled and led to this awkward and embarrassing situation. Some have questioned why I have been so personally involved in the subject of this agenda. I think I've sort of explained that because I believe in the city, but I believe our city charter holds me responsible for the manner in which city government carries out its responsibility. The city charter does hold me responsible for that. And I condemn fallacious and harmful rumors. I believe that representatives or our government use the power of government to harm their reputation and stymie the progress of one of its citizens. Government retains incredible power within its jurisdictional authority. We cannot let people with ulterior, self-centered motives use their position within government to unfairly and unethically harm in any way another person. This council may decide to cancel Ms. Rusing's contract tonight, but this effort will not fail because of a bogus conflict of interest charge or open meeting violations. It will fail largely because two council members, the two on the far right, in concert with a relatively small number of staff deliberately and surreptitiously derailed it. Unfortunately, Ms. Rusing has become collateral damage for the real target and that's me. I was in the crosshair, she became a victim. Regardless of the reasons, this agreement, the vehicle employed to bring her back to Goodyear has failed. It has failed. The motivations and intentions were absolutely for the right reasons. Execution doomed this agreement. Much as we need this person's superb qualities in Goodyear, I cannot vote in favor of continuing or revising her agreement. It represents a failed effort without any probability of success. I will, however, wholeheartedly endorse Ms. Rusing's personal and professional qualifications in fair and open competition to again represent our city as a full-time employee in economic development. We can now move to a vote. This will be upper ground, right? This isn't a roll call vote. It's been so long since we started this. Okay, the motion on the table is to cancel the contract with a two-week notice effective immediately. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye, please. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it six to one. Ms. Rusing's contract is canceled and, and it's, it's, and you'll get two weeks notice. Okay? Okay, now we'll go to 9C and D.
Could we take a little break? We've been at it for an hour and a half. So, maybe two or three minutes.
If you'd like a break or you want to keep moving.
I don't care. Either way.
I don't need one. I think we've got everybody waiting for us.
I'm okay.
Okay. If you'd like to break real quick, we'll do that, yes.
And then, and then if we get through this next one in reasonable time, we'll break after it. If we don't, we'll break during it. Wow. Is that all right?
Yeah.
And, okay. It's a tough night for all of us. Sorry for that. Okay, we're at 9C and D and this is the authorization to retain, well, whether or not we're going to investigate the mayor and I think, Rohr, you're the staff presenter on this one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before Rohr presents, I would, I would just like to make a motion that we move item 9C from the agenda.
What?
Make a motion that we remove item 9C from the agenda. Can I do that? Is that...
I think he has a solution which you've...
I was going to answer something.
He's going to, I think we've... Okay, okay. If you've resolved it, go for it.
I'll make a recommendation with Councilmember Holland. Otherwise, your, your motion will be in order as well at the table.
I'll refrain from my motion.
I was going to wait for Councilmember Holland unless you would like me to start.
Oh, you can start it.
Okay, she'll probably hear me in the hall anyway. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, we are back this evening on item 9C, which was postponed at the last meeting due to inclement weather. It's unusual in here, but that's what happened. We have two items. They're both the same subject matter with two different alternatives on how to accomplish the item. As opposed to taking both items individually, what I would suggest is that you take both items together, perhaps break the, you have one, you have one commonality between the two and that is the question of whether or not an investigation needs to be conducted upon the mayor. I would suggest that perhaps if the council makes that motion, you take that as the first motion and decide that question. motion and decide that question. And if there is a consensus majority to conduct an investigation of the mayor, then you discuss how you'd like to accomplish that, either through hiring outside counsel or referring this matter to the Attorney General's office or the county attorney. Procedurally, I think that's appropriate. It does leave you having to discuss the items twice, or you can make a motion to the table if you'd like to resolve it that way.
I think you're really asking two separate questions. And I think one is whether I endorse an investigation or not, and two, whether or not I endorse clarification. Investigation, I don't necessarily, I don't think that's my decision to make, I don't think it's your decision to make, and I don't think it's mayor's decision to make. Clarification, I'm willing to seek clarification. And so I think the spirit of the conversation, I'm one of seven, though, if others, but the spirit of the conversation is to, and I would even go as far, even though there's not a motion on the table, is to even clarify the language in D, and just altogether wipe C off the table. I quite frankly heard enough about C that I needed to hear August 28th, or, pardon me, August 28th is where we're at. A couple of Thursdays ago, when we were in chambers, when power went out, and I don't need to hear anymore about C. So, that's me, mayor. That's my rationale behind getting rid of C.
I appreciate that. Let me go to Councilmember Scott next.
I appreciate that input, because I think I was kind of responsible for this 9C. And really, clarification is the issue, not investigation. The reason this is on here, as far as I'm concerned, is because of the questions that were asked from our constituents regarding clarifying whether or not this was indeed any sort of violation on the part of the mayor. I asked the city council for clarification. They said they couldn't do that, and that's how we decided on outside counsel. I would just as soon skip that and go right to the AG's office and let them do the, give the opinion on this. So that's essentially all I can go down here.
You would like to consider an action on D.
Yeah, on D.
Yes, okay. Councilmember?
Once again, the point here being, the word is clarification, not investigation.
Whoa, okay. Okay. Councilmember Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to see D just fricking totally. And for this particular reason, along with three other members of the council, I've just returned from the annual cities and towns conference that was held in Tucson. There are many helpful informational sessions, which we are invited to attend on a voluntary basis. The sessions last on an average of two hours. Among the meetings that I attended was one that was titled, "Open Meeting Laws: Conflict of Interest." Of course, this subject deals with the current problem we are faced with, and during the course of this meeting, I was certainly enlightened. I was always under the impression that I could discuss with any councilperson the subject that I wanted to have on the agenda, placed on the agenda, then have three councilmembers agree with me. How else could I get anything on the agenda if I didn't have that type of movement? When the mayor approached me regarding the potential of bringing Gail Rusing on board, I assumed that was going to occur. When I asked him if he was going to contact other councilmembers, that should have been a signal for me that the mayor could possibly be in an area of violating open meeting law. At that time, this concern never entered my mind. Since the mayor contacted other members of the council, and they agreed with Ms. Rusing's hiring, this thought may never, at that time, enter their thoughts either. If the majority of the council agreed with the hiring, then all of us are in a position of unintentional violation of open meeting law. If this be the case, then I wonder why we are here belittling one another and causing continued damage to the city by carrying these actions to the extreme, and the extreme is going to the AG on this. Constant news reports, and now the threat of recall of members of this council, something that has never occurred in the city of Goodyear in its history, has added to this turmoil. This city has been known as a city that does things right. We are looked upon by other cities in the West Valley and throughout the state as meeting the challenge of growth expansion. Following the past example of those that built this great city, it is our duty to pattern our actions of what has been done in the past. This can only be done by a unified council. So now is the time to close ranks and get on with the job for which we were elected, and that is preserving the past and working for a vibrant future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're still seeing what our motion's going to be, correct? And I've understood from Councilmember Antoniak that he would like to delete C and go right to D.
And I'd make that motion.
Okay, and, okay, then why, let's do that.
Yeah, I'd make the motion, and we'd do that. We eliminate item 9C from further consideration.
Second. Call the vote. Okay, it's, delete 9C from further consideration is the motion, and it's been seconded. Motion made by Councilmember Antoniak, seconded made by Vice Mayor Cavalier. Discussion?
I just call for the vote, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Let's see, this is, yep. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 9C is deleted, and, okay, so 9C is deleted. Roark?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, my presentation will be very short this evening. This action item was a result of comments made at the last, that last meeting, and whether or not this matter could be referred to the county attorney's office or the attorney general's office, both of which would have jurisdiction conflict of interest cases in the state of Arizona. The question was asked is, could I, as your attorney, refer that, to that matter, to those agencies? And my response was, yes, if directed by the council by a majority vote, we would write that letter and refer that matter. That question is in front of you this evening, on whether or not you are directing your attorney to do that. With that, I would answer any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Antoniak.
Mr. Massey, it's very important for me to understand your role in this, because I think that's germane to the discussion as well. But are, you're in a position where you would recuse yourself of any question related to this, correct?
Yes. I feel that as your attorney of the council as a whole, that I have an inherent conflict of interest in taking any position that could even potentially be adverse to any individual council member. So I'm not the appropriate person to review this matter, nor is any attorney in my office. So that is what, yes, I believe I would have a conflict of interest in doing any review or offering any opinion on this matter.
Okay. Councilmember Susan?
Counsel? Then it would be your intention, I would assume, that you would make a part of your presentation, the comments, and what has occurred here relative to this intended item, is that correct? Including my comments?
We could attach...
My interpretation of what I learned at the, at the meeting that I attended at ten cities and towns.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Susan, we could attach a copy of the minutes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're, are you, is that it, Roark?
No. As far as my statements?
Yes.
I'm done, yes.
Okay. We need to, okay, we need to go to the public soon.
Anything, if we approve D, anything that you ask, any questions you ask of the AG's office, and will be by the direction of council, you're not going to add anything to this. You're going to just ask the questions that we present to you, is that correct?
Aye. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, all right. What we have, now we're going to the public, we're opening to the public, and we're on 9D, and that's conflict of interest investigation by county attorney or attorney general, direct city attorney to ask either county or attorney general states to investigate whether Mayor Kavanaugh's participation in any of the votes taken by this in connection with GM Consulting in the city of Goodyear violated state conflict of interest law. And what I'd like to do is start with those people who support that motion, who support the motion to investigate the mayor or seek greater clarification. Could we start with, I've got, I think, Mr. Going? You're the, you have support of the motion?
I, yeah, I, when I filled out, I thought I was referring to the one I just mentioned.
Okay, and we've got that.
I did not listen to question your honesty or whatever.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any further public comment on investigation of me, that wants that? Okay, we'll move to those who are opposed to investigating me, and I'm going to, I've got several cards here, we'll go through them. But first, we start, in these cards, we'll start with the attorney, and Robert Burke, if he would come forward, and he'll be able to express the legal situation, and then we'll ask for public participation of the largely residents of Goodyear, and we ask you to keep those comments within three minutes, if you could. Mr. Burke?
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, my name is Robert Burke. I'm an attorney with the Phoenix Law Firm of Jones, Skelton, Hockley. Our involvement in this matter is a result of Mayor Kavanaugh contacting my partner Mel McDonald, former U.S. attorney, and asking Mel and my firm to offer an objective opinion as to whether he had in fact violated conflict of interest law. Specifically, the question we examined was whether the fact that the mayor's wife helped Ms. Rusing purchase a home and received a commission from the seller in connection with that transaction created a conflict of interest, such that the mayor was ethically prohibited from participating in the vote on her hiring. For reasons I'll briefly explain, we conclude that there was no conflict of interest. And the facts that we looked at were these, and I don't think these are in dispute. Two years ago, Ms. Rusing, when she left Phoenix to go to Yuma, she sold her house and used the mayor's wife as her agent to sell her house. Then earlier this year, when Ms. Rusing moved back to Phoenix, she called the mayor's wife again. They had a pre-existing business relationship. In other words, their business relationship between the mayor's wife and Ms. Rusing predated by some number of years the contract that's at issue here. Secondly, although the city formally approved Ms. Rusing's contract after Ms. Rusing asked the mayor's wife to assist her with the purchase of a home, the initial contact with and solicitation of Ms. Rusing predated that. In other words, the mayor and the city had approached Ms. Rusing and expressed an interest in hiring her before the real estate issue was even on the table. That occurred later. The next fact that we looked at was the fact that the purchase contract between Ms. Rusing and the home seller in which the mayor's wife is involved had a number of contingencies. It was by no means a certain transaction, and there were several opportunities for it to fall out and for no commission to be earned. I should also point out, the mayor's wife was not paid directly by Ms. Rusing, the seller paid all the commissions. The record reflects that the contract was unanimously approved, and that's been discussed tonight as a consent item. I think without substantial discussion, no evidence that the mayor attempted to influence at the meeting anybody in that regard. And then, lastly, we, there was no evidence that we could find that there was any attempt to conceal this. Ms. Rusing's contract or agency relationship with the mayor's wife was not hidden, in fact was known by several people, including the mayor's assistants. Brief legal analysis now. The operative statute is Arizona Revised Statute 38503. And it states that in interpreting that statute, what the courts say is, in order to have a conflict of interest, two factors need to be present, both of two factors. First, the public official charged with the violation must have a direct, non-remote interest in the contract at issue. The contract at issue being Ms. Rusing's contract. Here it is undisputed that the mayor, or neither the mayor nor his wife, had any direct interest in the consulting contract. Obviously, the situation would be different if the mayor owned some interest in Ms. Rusing's consulting firm, or if there was a kickback involved. None of that's present here. In fact, the council's approval of that contract did not benefit financially the mayor or his wife in any way. The statute that I mentioned offers some guidance about what kinds of interests are remote. And one of the things that specifically talks about in ARS 3850210 is that, it says, for example, a landlord-tenant relationship is so remote that it doesn't create a conflict of interest. So let's assume Ms. Rusing had in fact been a tenant of the mayor's and had been paying him rent. The statute makes it clear that even that situation, which is far more direct than this situation, would not legally constitute a conflict of interest. The second requirement for there to be a conflict of interest is that the pecuniary or financial gain must be certain and not speculative. And as I mentioned here, the gain was, if any, indirect and speculative. At the time her contract was signed, there was no guarantee that any money was going to be received directly or indirectly. And I have case sites, if anyone wants to take the trouble to look at them. In sum, we did try to look at it subjectively, and the statute's pretty clear, and this is not a conflict of interest under Arizona law. And candidly, Mayor Kavanaugh retained us, and I don't mean to suggest that we were retained by an independent third party, but we did provide him with an independent opinion. That's the legal analysis. But I can understand some of you asking, okay, that's your opinion, counsel, why not then refer to the AG? What's the harm in doing that? Well, the harm is in two areas. Number one, the AG is already bursting at the seams with legitimate criminal investigations. This is not one of them. It is not. Second, and it's related, this conflict of interest allegation has nothing to do with a true conflict of interest or with the good of the city of Goodyear. Is anyone really suggesting here, because I haven't heard it, is anyone really suggesting here that the mayor's interest in bringing Ms. Rusing on board was in some way related to the fact that his wife was going to get a $10,000 commission? Does anyone really believe that? What's happened here, and Ms. Rusing referred to it, is a political football has been created here. And she's right, she is the football. And if you refer this matter to the AG, all you're going to do is continue that football game, and you're going to get tit for tat, and this dissension among the committee is going to continue. There's nothing to be gained by that. There's no conflict of interest. You involve the AG, you take this to another level. And I'm telling you from a legal standpoint, the result at that additional level is not going to change, but what's going to happen is, the mayor is then going to be forced to defend himself, and in doing so, it's going to increase just the kind of backbiting and dishonesty among councilmembers that's gotten you to where you are. So, yes, there's a harm to referring to the AG's office, a serious harm. It's going to waste resources. I've heard from this council tonight, a consensus that this council needs to move forward, stop all this infighting, and look out for the best interest of the city of Goodyear. You do that by putting this ridiculously trumped-up conflict of interest issue to bed, move forward with legitimate city issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to go with the following sequence, if I can, so everybody's prepared. We'll start with the mayor of Youngtown, Brian Hackbar, if you go up there, Brian, then Paul Bernard, Candace Wees, Andrew Best has already briefed us, Annette Bretner, Andrea Gisitis, Sharon Nye, Gloria King, June Van Valkenburg, William Nye, William Bretner, Dr. Robert Guyette, or Regina, Linda Kavanaugh, and that's it. So, that's our sequence. Brian, you're, Brian is the mayor of Youngtown.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Councilmembers, a number of you I know, knowing you for a number of years, and I thank you for this opportunity, and to the people of Goodyear. Excuse as I look over here, because I want to tell you guys something. I've gone through what is happening here right now in Goodyear. I'm being mugsling in the paper, lies, you know how this lady feels.
Excuse me, ma'am.
This council category is split, it's fractured, you've got to use it, Mike, and it needs to stop. I don't live here, but I'll tell you something, I've had a lot of respect for this city, a lot of respect from Eric Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, Antoniak, and so is Don't continue this. I'm going through it, and it's an embarrassment, the media loves it, and all you do is hurt yourselves. You hurt friendships, friendships that can't be fixed. Goodyear is an outstanding city, and I've supported Jim and this council on many issues, not always publicly, because it doesn't always sit real with my council. But to Gail, I understand Gail very hardly, because I went through this with an employee that we hired. Let me tell you something, education is not everything. There are many people in this world that do not have a degree, who've become very successful, and most of you know of one, Bill Gates. I don't need to go any... I don't need to go any further with that, I don't think, but what I say, you guys, recall, whoever does a recall, you're wasting town resources, town money, and an embarrassment in ruining the personal name of any person who sits up and giving their time to public service. That's what a general election is for, if you're not happy with your council member or mayor, that's when you do it. Recall is a lost cause. Unfortunately, in my community, they think that's the best thing, to recall me and two other people, and then three months later, have another reelection of those same people. So you talk about double dipping here. I've known Jim and his wife for over three years, and I believe their integrity is up on the highest pedestal. And Jim, I know for a fact, as a retired Air Force Colonel, that's one thing the Air Force really heavily relies on, is integrity. And there's another gentleman over here that spoke to that earlier. Please, put your differences aside, whatever half a half has to happen, happen. Jim did what he thought, in his mind, bringing somebody he thought was good for this community who has a past record. I don't know all the details, but I would support Gail, and I recommend all you guys to reconsider, to take a look, because if she's done such a good job before she left, why not now? Goodyear has the opportunity to be the best city in the West Valley, and I'm proud to be able to say that I know a number of them on that council. And staff, I'm not letting you guys out, I've known Stephen for three and a half years, and a number of other staff people, they're outstanding people. Put your differences aside.
Brian, we've got three minutes, we've got to roll.
The AG is not the way to go, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Why don't we take you after the next one, is that all right? Okay, Paul Bernard.
Can I stand on this, Jim? I'm pretty short here. I'm Paul Bernard, I've lived in Goodyear for the last 10 years, I've known Jim and Linda Kavanaugh for the last eight years, I've had business dealings with them, I'm very involved in the community and the high schools here, and what I see actually kind of breaks my heart. I think maybe there's, in the council members, some underlying things that you probably don't want to get out. Let me tell you, people that live in glass houses should not throw stones. Second thing I want to tell you is, about Gail Rusing, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know the lady, but I'm a perfect example of a guy with a high school education who was making $150,000 bucks a year for the Boeing Company when I retired. I started as a sweeper, I ended up in charge of the delivery center on the flight line. So it can happen, and there are good people out there without the education. Again, I want to say, I live in Goodyear, I support Jim, I think you guys, as council members, need to drop this thing, let's get the Cleveland Indian baseball team in here, and let's get some real growth in the city. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, thank you very much. Rich Willness.
Good evening, Mayor, council, my name is Rich Willness. I've been a resident of Goodyear for five and a half years, about six and a half years in the valley the first time, I've lived in the valley in the mid-'70s for about three years, and I know, most of you know that Goodyear has changed significantly since that time. I first met Jim Kavanaugh in the summer of 2002, we were teammates on the same softball team. In sports, you learn a great deal about someone, you see in action a man's character, his sense of sportsmanship and fair play, his desire and his motivation. I learned a great deal about Jim as we played next to each other, he as a shortstop and I as a third baseman. We formed a strong relationship or friendship that summer based upon a mutual desire to serve our team well, and give it all we could. At third base, I had the third base foul line on my right flank, on my left flank, I had Jim Kavanaugh. He was ready to give his all to prevent a ball going between us, just as I was. He was aggressive but smart, don't jive, just look good, I liked that attitude. Together, we mutually agreed that our side of the infield was sealed, we developed a strong mutual trust. So what does all of this mean about the mayor and the execution of his duties? That prompted something in me, because I knew nothing of Jim's background, nor his role in the community in which I now lived. Based upon our friendship in the field, I realized I wanted to get him to know better, or get to know him better. I found out that he was a retired Colonel in the United States Air Force. I also learned he was a member, or sat on this council at that time, the great council we're addressing now. That's meant something to me, a retired U.S. Colonel and also a politician. Those two facts alone got my attention quick. Perhaps that statement gets your attention, noticing the blank stares on your faces. Why, you may ask? Well, I'm a retired Marine. If you still don't understand, and you don't know, you're a United States Marine. Now that our paths had crossed and we were in the same community, I wanted to learn all I could about Jim. Jim served our country for more than 30 years, he served remote tours in the Vietnam War, and many years later in the deserts of Africa. He was on the front line in the Cold War with the Soviet Union, and is a Minuteman Missile Crew member. He has been actively engaged in serving Goodyear, and I am drawn to him for his dedication and his desire to continue to serve. He has demonstrated leadership skills that extend beyond Goodyear and involve other positions that are engaged in handling issues, dealing with the emerging growth of the West Valley, you all know that far more than I do. The diversity of his efforts is well represented by the wide range of issues on the agenda tonight. Over the past four years, I have found Jim to be a man of courage, a man of vision with substantive goals for Goodyear and a plan to achieve those goals. He's a man of courage, commitment, and conviction, he's a man of integrity, with the utmost concern for executing the public trust inherent in his position. Above all, he is a leader, a man who gets things done. Just as in softball, I trust him unfailingly, not only with protecting my flank, but spearheading our movement forward. In conclusion, Jim Campbell, or Kavanaugh, is the person we continue to need to complete the mission he came to office on. I urge the council members to search deep and true both your minds and your hearts, and do not, I repeat, do not, take any action that will jeopardize his ability to lead Goodyear to accomplish that mission. Thank you.
Candace Weest, please.
I really am standing up, this is it. I'm Candace Weest, and I was recruited to the West Valley in February, so I'm not an expert on what all has led up to this evening by any means, I'm not here to jump into the fray, but I will tell you something, I do know something about, is that as a prospective new resident, when I came to Goodyear, everybody I talked to said without a doubt that Goodyear was the city who got it right. They had a mayor and a council who knew what they were doing, and you know what, it showed up. As somebody new coming in, this was a great place to live, and I was very excited, and my husband and I made a major investment here in Goodyear because we recognized the long-term potential. I came from a city in Southern California where the mayor and the council and the city managers couldn't quite ever seem to get out of each other's way, and they couldn't function as a team. And so what we got was, we wound up seeing the Nordstroms and the upscale developments going to cities all around us, because you know what, no one wanted to make a major investment and deal with that. No one wanted to go in and hear from council members that, yeah, this is great, it's going to go, everything's fine, only to find out it really wasn't, and pretty soon, what we found out was that the people we were recruiting didn't want to have anything to do with us because we seemed like too much work. And as an employer of a major business, what I found was, it got harder and harder to recruit good people there. I paid a headhunter $40,000 seven years ago, upfront, no guarantees, to find a senior lending officer, only to find that three guys from Orange County came in, took a look around, and said, there's no way I want to work in there. So, I don't envy you tonight, and I come here with a lot of respect for what we do. I particularly applaud the remarks of Vice Mayor Cavalier when he talked about integrity, some of you echoed similar themes, and I urge you to think about how you vote tonight, and how that will impact the economic development efforts for this great city that I come to love very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Annette Bretner.
Good evening again, my name is Stillnette Bretner, and I still live at 18185 West Ann Arbor Lane. I came to know Jim Kavanaugh when I volunteered for his campaign during his first run for mayor. I decided to support him then, and I'm supporting him now, because I was impressed with his vision for Goodyear, and I found him to be a man of honor and integrity. From day one, he has worked tirelessly to portray Goodyear as a city people would be proud to live in. He is well-known throughout the valley for being fair, honest, dedicated, and hardworking. His work to preserve Luke, as well as his leadership on MAG and the widening of the I-10, have only served to showcase Mayor Kavanaugh's character and abilities. Jim Kavanaugh has made mayor of Goodyear a full-time position. He has done so by being dedicated to doing what it takes to make sure he does the best job possible for the people who elected him. Because of this dedication, the operation of the family business has been left in the hands of the mayor's spouse. It is unreasonable to expect the spouse of any mayor to not be able to operate a business and earn a living. The seller of the home paid the commission to Mrs. Kavanaugh, it was not paid by Ms. Rusing or out of taxpayer funds. To expect the mayor's wife to not assist an old client with the purchase of a house is to deny her the right to conduct business. If you're going to pursue this vein, will you also delve into any other possible conflicts of interest, improprieties, or lack of impartiality by any members of this council or their families? If you take this to absurdity, you will limit the future candidate pool for mayor and city council to people who are independently wealthy, government employees, retirees, or unemployed, and unmarried. I don't think this approach is best for the city of Goodyear. I would like to remind you that no one here today received more votes than our mayor in either of the last two elections. The voters spoke not once, but twice, and it should be the voters who decide who is the mayor, not this council or city manager. In closing, while I may not always agree with Mayor Kavanaugh, I do believe he has always acted with the best interest of the city of Goodyear and its residents in mind. Unfortunately, I cannot say the same for some of you. And in closing, again, I think we all owe his, all owe him our thanks and support, thank you for your time, and to some of you, shame on you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have allotted my time to someone else, if he has a minute left, I'll take it.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and take two?
I really only have...
I have a card from Mr. Bretner, so he's...
Okay, well, he was afraid he was going to go over, and I don't like speaking, as you all know. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilman, I have to tell you that I'm extremely, extremely sad to be here today. I'm ashamed, I'm ashamed of all of you. And maybe the mayor overstepped by being so zealous, but I say to you in turn, City Councilman, you had the opportunity to question at the vote, and you questioned nothing, and then you're trying to put a conflict of interest on him. I think you should all think about what you've done. Get to working together.
My name is Sharon Ray Nye, I've been an 11-year resident, 17803 West Cactus Flower in Goodyear. Very proudly, I might say until recently, tonight I speak as a member, member, of the Political Action Committee Concerned Citizens of Goodyear. This letter is addressed to council members Lord, Antoniak, Scott, and Holland. Ladies and gentlemen, the future of Goodyear is for sale tonight. Newspaper polls, anonymous phone calls, unsigned letters are the tools of cowards. If you think the lies and innuendos will be perpetuated, you will fail. At maintaining cool heads, you have failed. At remaining fair, impartial, unbiased, without personal vendettas and revenge against Mayor Kavanaugh, you have failed. In covering up clandestine meetings, being in complicity with three city staff, you have and you will fail. Your nefarious activities have tarnished the visions of Mayor Kavanaugh and the past 20 years' hard work of other council members, and ultimately, the citizens of Goodyear. You will fail. If you think your elected position is one of power to be used with impunity, you have failed miserably. Your unmitigated evil, political moves and motives are obvious and predictable, you will fail. At your efforts to summarily eradicate Mayor Kavanaugh and his wife Linda and destroy their sterling reputations, you will absolutely fail. The only thing you've succeeded at is unraveling the past work of many, many good people. You newcomers have a lot to learn, your path will ultimately make you fail at everything. If we have find that there have been promises, favors, or dispensations made by any council member, city staff, or Goodyear consultant, remember, you will fail. What we want and deserve is fair and impartial voting, the cessation of your pettiness so this council can truly represent the people of Goodyear. Mayor Kavanaugh, you are our mayor. We want to continue to share your vision for Goodyear, we care a great deal and are by your side. We're greatly saddened by the actions of these four council members and a handful of citizens who have their own private agendas. You did not cause these problems, but we know that you will rise above this. We know it, that the things going on around you, you can't change, but they don't change the qualities within you, sir. Your honesty, integrity, courage, and caring for the city of Goodyear, your dedication is exemplary. You're a great and wonderful person, you are our mayor, thank you.
Janet Kersbaum.
I'm not as eloquent as the speakers before me, I just wrote some notes. I live in Goodyear in Pebble Creek, I've lived here, we've lived here three years, however, I have a good, firm, strong stand. My great-grandfather was a cowpuncher in Tempe, my mother was born here before it was a state, so I actually came home. And what I came home to was a beautiful, small town with a mayor who worked with his heart, who was very approachable, whether it was walking down the street, or at Wildflower or whatever, you could always say, hi, mayor, and for him to stand behind you when you do have a problem, like I spoke about before. This is a mayor that works with his heart, and it shows, it shows greatly, and all I can say is, shame on you all. Let's all work together as a community, as a wonderful community, and grow. That's what we looked forward to when we moved here, it was going to be a beautiful, growing city, and not with this, and then we were so lucky to meet a wonderful mayor. So, let's put all this behind us and work together. Thank you.
Thank you. June Van Valkenburg.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, Councilwomen, fellow citizens, city staff, my name is June Van Valkenburg, my name is June Van Valkenburg, I live at 10749 Cool Water Drive in Australia Mountain Ranch. My husband Steve and I have lived there since 1991, and we have enjoyed and been proud of living in the city of Goodyear up until recently. Over the years, I have donated countless hours to this community through civic and business organizations... business organizations, and also to the city of Goodyear, notably when I was events chair for the 50th anniversary for the city of Goodyear. Over the years, I have also worked for the city in a contract situation for public works, economic development, community development, the city manager's office, and also the police department. As you may imagine, I see a lot of familiar faces tonight, and I'm familiar with a couple of these items that have been on the agenda. I find this so upsetting, but I am here tonight to tell you that I've put my wholehearted support behind our mayor. He is a man of commitment, a man of vision, and a man of humility. I was proud to vote for him, and I am proud to know him. Einstein said, "Great spirits have always encountered opposition from mediocre minds." While malicious gossip, mean-spirited innuendo, and mindless half-truths swirl around City Hall, spread throughout the community, and into the media, I have witnessed Jim Kavanaugh steadfastly continuing the business of this city. He is a man of exemplary character. He's fair-minded, and those actions of his speak louder than all the unkind, unfair, unfounded accusations those who oppose him would throw at him. I invite everyone here tonight who believes in Jim Kavanaugh's honesty and integrity, his superior leadership skills, and his extraordinary vision, to express your support for the mayor anytime you can, anywhere you can, to anyone you can. This man, this fine citizen, this statesman-like public servant deserves the unwavering support of everyone here as he goes about the business of taking care of the future of Goodyear.
William Nye?
I'm William Nye. I live the same place Sharon does, and I agree with everything she said. I'd like to review a little bit of history of Goodyear. I came here about, oh, almost twelve years ago, and I tried to locate in Goodyear, but all I could find from your economic development people was $2.50 a square foot, and no way could I afford that, being a small business. And I was offered the opportunity of moving in with a business established here, a chemical plant, and I was invited to become part of his group and work from his facility with the opportunity of helping him bring online equipment that I was very, very familiar with. I invented, I redesigned, I built most of it, and he bought it from a company that I used to work for. Now, like Gail, I'm uneducated. I'm a college dropout. I'm a high school graduate. But I was hired by Georgia Pacific, this company that I worked for prior, about thirty years ago. They were losing a million dollars a year in their divisions. The vice president of the Far Western Division of Georgia Pacific came to my home and bade me to work for them as their divisional engineer. I said, "I'm not an engineer." He says, "Yeah, but you know what you're doing." And so, I agreed. He made me an offer I could not refuse, went to work for him. Within six months, I turned him around to breaking even, and I designed, on their money, a lot of the machinery that I today manufacture and sell all over the world. Even in a bad year, the Clinton years, I could bring down $100,000, a one-man company. But I make my customers profitable. Now, when I tried to locate in Goodyear and was kicked out when this company could no longer operate in the area, I had to go find a building somewhere. I went to Buckeye. Well, that was terrible, but that was the only thing I could find. Now, at that time, and I remember with my dealings with your economic development people, they were operating building standards of 1987, which is in the era where, you know, the environmental wackos could say no to just about everything, and this city just said no to just about everything. And I never understood why, but I also noticed that there was no economic development for a number of years until Jim Kavanaugh came on. Now, all of a sudden, while, of course, in those years, the cities around us developed, really developed, everything went to, you know, Glendale, and Peoria, and Avondale, and Goodyear did nothing. When Jim Kavanaugh came on board, I supported him wholeheartedly, as I do today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. William Bretnar?
Good evening. My name is Bill Bretnar. I live at 18185 West San Alberto Lane. I'm very happy with the recent progress here in Goodyear with our plans to move forward with the widening of I-10, the I-10 reliever, the new Australia Falls Mall, a potential college campus, and spring baseball. The driver behind all this progress is the mayor of Goodyear, Jim Kavanaugh. The mayor's recent promotion to the head of MAG ensures that the West Valley will get the promised roads and road improvements that we've missed in the past. Jim's efforts on widening the I-10 ahead of schedule will facilitate further population growth here in the southwest valley. Mayor, it's imperative that you continue as the head of MAG. It's really key and crucial for the West Valley. Up until 2006, much of Goodyear's progress was facilitated by good teamwork between the mayor and this council, as well as the mayor and MAG. The recent actions of this council was certainly indicated a change in chemistry. However, I haven't seen a change in Jim's behavior at all. So, what's changed and why? I'm the former chairman of Legislative District 12 for one of the two major political parties, and I know politics when I see it. As a taxpayer and citizen of Goodyear, with a city council that's elected at large, I expect city councilmembers to work on behalf of all Goodyear citizens, and that includes me. What has come out in the paper recently indicates to me that many on the council have their own personal agendas that they continue to advance. The real question is, why does the city council and city manager want to investigate Mayor Kavanaugh? There's an old adage in politics, "When you're having your own problems, change the subject." Where do I start? When Jim first ran for mayor, I asked him what he would do about city projects that would get studied to death and unaccountable and unresponsive city managers. Jim assured me at that time that he would initiate a review process that would include top city managers. Based on Steve Cleveland's role in the foregoing rusing proceedings indicates that Steve doesn't want or appreciate additional scrutiny. Perhaps Steve may want to go back to the pre-Kavanaugh days of unaccountability. And at this point, I was going to go into something where I'd done some research on some councilmembers, but in the spirit of the evening, and since things have been pretty positive, I'm going to ignore a little bit of my speech here, but there are some other things going on in the council, and we'll leave that for another day. Could a call for the investigation of the mayor be a distraction designed to focus attention away from members of the city council's personal deeds? The public will be the ultimate judge of this. I am limited in time, so I can't share other information I have. In my opinion, it is a waste of taxpayer dollars to investigate the mayor further. If you proceed with this, we will take the chance of derailing progress made in Goodyear and in the West Valley. Remember, the MAG chairmanship will go to Scottsdale Mayor Manros, resulting in West Valley road projects being put on the back burner again for another twenty years. The stakes are too high to allow petty politics to dictate what will happen in Goodyear in the West Valley. At this time, I recommend we move on with Goodyear's real business and put aside the drama. After all, taxpayers of Goodyear deserve better.
Thank you. Dr. Guyette Oregina?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council folks. My name is Robert Guyette, and although I'm not a resident of Goodyear, I started my surgery practice nineteen years ago across the street and down about three blocks, and since there I moved around the corner, but have been coming out here consistently for those nineteen years. I was out here at a time when you look down Litchfield Road, and it doesn't look like it does now. A lot has changed, a lot of positive. I do have another practice, but as time goes by, and more and more, I'm spending more time out here in the West Valley because of what I think is the most amazing growth story that I've ever seen. And so, I come with that kind of spirit. I've seen a lot of growth. I came out here before it all happened, hearing, "Hey, West Valley's going to grow, West Valley's going to grow." I didn't see it happening. It's really accelerated. It's really pretty fantastic and exciting. I think all of us will agree to that. And I think, at this point, it would be a mistake to abandon the course that has been taken. And I do speak in support of Mayor Kavanaugh. I've known him for probably five or six years, and the vision and the energy that he's brought to the city and to the different projects that are now being spoken about, the baseball and such, and all that's been discussed. I won't go into that. I just spent a moment talking about a couple of other things. One's the military aspect. I have two sons that are in the military, one's a Marine, one's Air Force. And I know that for Mayor Kavanaugh to reach the level of a base commander, you don't get that without integrity and without leadership. And those are two things I think that are very important right now. So, I think that to get someone like Mayor Kavanaugh, who has this background, is unusual, someone of this caliber, to want to serve the public, to take this position with all his slings and arrows, and to continue on, I think is unusual. And I think that it's important that, not only for Mayor Kavanaugh, but for people down the road who are thinking about taking this position, that we see that the right thing is done. So, I think it's important at this time to understand and to think about what's important and what's not important, what's true and what's not true, and make decisions on that. I think Jim has demonstrated integrity in many, many ways. So, any decision other than to allow Jim and his staff to continue, and you folks and the council, to continue your development of this area, I think would be a mistake. Thanks.
Thank you. And the last card is Linda Kavanaugh. No bias here, I'm sure. You know what? Did I miss Gloria?
Yeah, we had Gloria King and Robert Burke still.
Robert Burke has spoken.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, Gloria. Your card, I don't see it. I missed it, I thought it happened. I'm sorry. Apologize.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members, nearly everything I had prepared has already been said. I think you know that, well, my name is Gloria King, and I live on Australia Parkway. Many of you know that my husband, my late husband, Jim King, was considered a patriarch of Goodyear. He really loved Goodyear, and he devoted much of his time, his talent, and his money to promoting Goodyear, and this is a legacy that I have inherited. I loved him, and I love Goodyear. And it hurts me very much. I'm afraid if I continue, I'm either going to cry or throw up. This is very disturbing, very disturbing. I think that Goodyear was doing so well, and all of a sudden, all hell's broken loose, and I don't want your kids to grow up.
Linda Kavanaugh?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Linda Kavanaugh, and I reside at 3752 North 156th Drive, Goodyear, Arizona, same as the mayor. I'm honored to speak this evening on a subject I'm particularly fond of, our mayor, my husband. I'd like to share some excerpts from a speech prepared, word for word, by my husband on the final day in the life of Chanute Air Force Base, Illinois, on September 30th, 1993. "Jim was the last center commander." The entire speech is now posted in the Air Force Museum in Rantoul, Illinois, so if anyone is interested, they can always go on that website. Verbatim, "Closure of this base was unwanted, unsolicited, and a very much anxiety-filled event, indisputably a sad occasion. But let us also comment on the emotion of closure and the sadness associated with the departure of a friend. East Central Illinois is losing a lifelong neighbor. The Air Force is leaving. The blue suitor, spouse, and family have come to comprise a special segment of American society. We in blue are a disciplined people, a generous people, unassuming, neat and orderly, courteous and uncommonly loyal. Have I not just described the characteristics of a good neighbor? This Air Force family will be missed. But leave we must and conclude seventy-six years of service at Chanute Air Force Base. More than two million military men and women have passed through this beautiful installation, some led extraordinary careers, such as General Elliott, who served in the European Theater during America's finest hour; Colonel Stutz, who bravely endured torture for six years as a POW during the darkest hour in this, the American century. Most, however, probably served in relative ordinary circumstances, as I did. Regardless of how each of us responded to conditions affecting us in our respective generations, each of us served, each answered the call. In 1861, the greatest of all Americans came out of Springfield, just southwest of here, and headed east. He called on men in uniform to preserve the Union. They did. His successors thereafter called on military men and women to preserve freedom and protect the American way of life. They did, and we do. For seventy-six years, Chanute Air Force Base has been a formidable part of that achievement. It closes with honor." This was not only part of the closing, but also my husband's retirement speech after serving our country for thirty years. Notice, he never spoke of himself, only as an ordinary participant. Would a person who spoke these and wrote these words risk selling his soul for a mess of pottage? I think not. I know not.
Thank you. Okay, completes the public part of the agenda item. We'll now move to asking for the motion from the council, again, we're on B. Ask for a motion from the council.
I would like a moment to speak, and how does that procedure go?
Pardon me?
If we don't get a motion for this, if the councilperson wants to say something-
Well, I'm sure we'll get a motion to do something.
Another motion?
No.
A motion's coming.
How do we handle that, Robert?
Mr. Mayor, the council, the purpose of the motion is to impede the will of the council, that the topic is for review discussion, so absent a motion, there is no discussion.
Mr. Mayor, for the sake of discussion, because I think there's some folks that want to discuss it, whether it goes up and down, I'd move that we direct the city attorney to seek clarification from the county attorney as to whether or not any participation in any of the votes taken by the city council or the mayor in connection with a contract between GM Consultant and city of Goodyear violated state conflict of interest laws.
I have a motion.
Dies, it dies, then we don't discuss it.
You can. We'll let you discuss this, absolutely. I have a motion without a second, is that correct?
No, I'll second it.
Okay. Motion to go to the Attorney General or the county attorney and seek- Motion to go to the Attorney General or the County Attorney and seek clarification.
And I've got the floor.
Yes, sir. A motion from Councilmember Antoinette, second from Councilmember Holland.
Quite personally, the comments this evening have moved me in a direction that while I don't necessarily have the clarity that I have sought, and that the attorneys, while respected, got up in front of us this evening, gave us very clean and very defensible remarks. You don't have a duty to the public. You might have an oath, and you might have a duty, but you don't have a duty to the public. But that said, I think our very public discussion is a very public discussion at that. And I think the two individuals in the motion in item nine D, the county attorney and the attorney general, if they desire to do so and take the action on their own behalf, on their own accord, it's up to them. We've had the dialogue that we need to have, the issues on the table. I said before, I don't want to be judge and jury in this case, and that's up to someone else. So while I made the motion, I will not support my own motion moving forward.
Remember Lord?
Yes. I want to state right at the beginning that when we started this involvement with this, with Gail and the contract, there was never one time that I think I've ever said that we didn't have a good mayor. I would not have run for this office had I not had a conversation with Gail. And I felt when I moved here, I thought it was a great city. I've lived, you know, moved twenty-two times in my lifetime, and this was going to be my hometown. And I don't think that's ever been a question in my mind. And I do object to you questioning my integrity. All right, Jim? I've been a wife for thirty years in the military. I've made lots of sacrifices for my country. My husband was in Vietnam three times. So when you talk about integrity and you talk about a way of life, I've lived that same way of life. I've supported my husband through a lot of severe times. And when this all came about, this was not to get the mayor. And this remark about a wannabe, I'm not a wannabe. I'm a citizen who was working on the city center committee because the mayor appointed me, and decided I wanted to see that progress, so I got onto the council. I have no agendas. I'm not the political machine I've seen here tonight. This is what I call a political machine. I'm just a wife who decided I loved this city, and I wanted to see some things happen. And when we went about this, I have to tell you, it just grew. We tried to stop it at one point. It just grew, and it got beyond our control. And now it's to the newspapers, and I don't think you're going to hear the end of this because there's more information out there that I've heard that the newspapers have gotten hold of, which I have no control over. So I love this council. We were a great working council. We didn't have any problems until the hiring of this person and the way we went about it. And I just say it's the process that we used was not good, and it caused all this consternation. So I just say to your citizens, and I'm not saying this if I run again to get your vote, it's non-political. I'm just saying from my heart what I think I've done and the rest of the council has done when we've tried to come to a determination on this. I praise the people that have come here today to speak up. This is the United States of America. This is the freedom we have to come up before this council and speak. And that's all I can say is God bless America. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, just to add to what has been said by Councilwoman Lord, this is truly democracy at work. And I'm proud to sit here and represent people who have come out in force to back a man that I respect. No question about that. Hook, line, and sinker, he's my fish. And I love what he's doing. He's just brought such an image to the city of Goodyear in the time that he's been in office. Who would ever think that we'd have in the West Valley a mayor sitting in his chair of MAG? Who would ever think we'd have an update of I-10, three, four years before it actually was to be moved on, other than this man to my right? He's done so much in such a short time for the city. It is hard, very, very hard, not to support him in all the efforts that he puts forth. A great man. You've all said that, and I agree with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all the input this evening. I am responsible for at least one of these items to be on the agenda, and once again, I'll tell you it's on there because of calls I received, maybe from some of you in this room, certainly constituents, asking me if I thought this was a conflict of interest. My answer was, I'm not an attorney, and I can't give the answer to that. But I'll ask our attorney. I asked our attorney, and he said I'd have a conflict if I gave you an answer to that question. So I said, how do we get an answer? And somehow, it came down to bringing it to the Attorney General's attention in order to get this simple question answered. I heard from an attorney this evening that there is no conflict of interest. And if it's a simple matter of getting an attorney's input, even if he does represent our mayor, he still gave us an honest input with regard to his legal opinion. And having received that, I don't think there's any reason to push this any further. And so I'm...
Yes, I only have a couple of things to say, and that is, I've known Jim Kavanaugh since, I guess, 1994, 95. We served on planning zoning commission together and became good friends, and I've known him all these years. His political life is well-known in the state. A mayor from another city comes to speak for him. Every legislator in our state knows Mayor Kavanaugh. And the governor has even asked Mayor Kavanaugh to come to her office to speak to her. He is respected by all these people. And I see no reason to carry this thing any further, and I never did from the very beginning. So I just thank God we've got Mayor Kavanaugh as our mayor. Councilmember Holland?
I would not have even considered being on the city council if it had not been for Mayor Kavanaugh. In fact, he talked to me about running for city council. I think the problem comes from how this contract was put into play, and it created a division amongst us. And we've been trying to work it out without having all the information, but just trying to keep working at it, and we haven't been very successful at making it work with all of us. So I agree with some of my fellow councilpeople that we heard from somebody tonight that says that there was not a conflict of interest. And if they agree that there's not a conflict of interest, then I'm certainly going to support that.
Thank you.
Yes. Given the motion on the table, Mr. Mayor, I'd prefer we just don't even go through the exercise, but I'll leave you with this comment before I remove my motion from the table and then we move on. I think you've got a job ahead, and that's one of building trust amongst the seven of us. That's one of building bridges. And if needed, answering questions that weren't asked of the public this evening in any way you see is a dutiful way to do so, whether that's an open letter, whether that's a discussion at a later date, whatever that might be. Just like any family of seven individuals, we go through the hem and the haw like you would at the kitchen table on a daily basis, on a weekly basis here, carrying out the public's business. And as you build your relationships in your family, sometimes they get knocked down. And we've got to do that here tonight. And Mayor, you're the one at the end of this that needs to do it. So with that, I'll remove my motion from the table if my second will agree.
And I'll agree.
Okay. Do I get to say anything?
Does the second?
I'm going to be very positive.
Order. Does the second have a say?
My second was over there.
Second, hold.
Then it sounds like we do not have a motion or a second, and we'll be closing this down.
That took care of the discussions because there's no motion.
I have no problem recognizing the mayor.
I will be very brief.
You haven't voted on it yet.
On removing my motion?
I removed it.
It doesn't require a vote with the first and second.
Okay. Councilmember Lord mentioned that this isn't going to end, there's more out there, and here it is. It's a letter that went to several councilmembers. It's from a concerned citizen, nameless, faceless, clueless. And I will talk to the newspaper on every item on here whenever you want, soon as possible. There is nothing on here with any validity. In fact, everything is entirely fallacious. So I don't want to take up everybody's time, but the newspaper will talk after the meeting if you want. I'll show you the letter. There it is. You're right. I have a chore ahead of me, and I'm up to that chore. And I want to say one thing, though. My wife and I were in Idaho when we got called down to come down here. And for the last month, this woman's been put through hell. And she cried in my arms, cried in my arms because of this. This is not a small matter, ladies and gentlemen. Good people have been harmed. But we have to move ahead. We have a vision in Goodyear. We're going to make ourselves a town in which colleges want to come. And because we stopped this, they're still going to want to come. But if we hadn't, they would have fallen away from us. We're going to try to bring baseball to this town. We're going to have great parks, and we're going to have great commercial, I hope. And I think we have some great staff, folks, and I'm very confident of this council coming together. And rest assured to everybody that I'm proud to be on this council, I'm proud to be in the city, I'm very thankful the very, very kind remarks have been made about me. You're definitely overrating me, but I'm going to hang in there for you, and you can count on me in the future. We'll make this together. Seven of us will make this the best council in the valley. So I thank you very much, and it's good recess time, I think.
Okay, we're ready to reassemble here. We'll go to E and consider adoption of an ordinance for tattoo, massage, and body piercing establishments. Katie Wilkins.
You don't mind if I take off my tie for this one? You're not going to make me get dressed up?
You've got to roll up your sleeves, Norm. It's very soon.
This is Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. This is an ordinance to adopt a tax amendment to allow massage establishments, tattoo establishments, and body piercing studios as a permitted use in the C2 general commercial zoning district. Originally, this was before you, allowing both tattoo studios and body piercing studios in the I2 general industrial zoning district, but from your recommendation, we removed that so that they will only be in the general commercial district. They would be required to have additional staff evaluation and have a 1,000-foot separation from each other and from schools. The tax amendment also defines massage establishments, tattoo studios, and body piercing studios. At this time, I'll go ahead and ask if you have any questions on the tax amendment.
Okay, let me, any others, further staff can just stand by and we'll have questions for you. Okay, and then opportunity now for the public. Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion, please. No, ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 061004, amending Article II, Article III, and Article IV of the zoning ordinance of the city of Goodyear, Arizona, adopted May 24, 1999, as amended to define body piercing studio, massage establishment, and tattoo studio, to allow for massage establishments, tattoo studios, and body piercing studios to be located in the C2 general commercial zoning district, subject to additional staff review requirements and separation requirements, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2006-1004, as read by the clerk.
Sagar.
Okay, a motion, Councilmember Antoniak and Second Councilmember Lord, it's now open for discussion. Councilmember Scott, please.
Yeah, I've got some important information regarding this item here. I spent a couple of hours this morning on the phone with various people at the county health department, and the two people that were most informative was the medical director, Bob England, and the Director of Environmental Services, John Power. I just confirmed what we already learned here, or that staff had learned, that the county, neither the county nor the state health departments have any control, nor they issue no control over the possible medical problems associated with these tattoo pollers and body piercing pollers with regard to the things I was concerned with, with hepatitis B.C. and other infectious diseases. Anyway, after a lot of discussion with regard to this, suggestion was made to me by the medical director, Bob England, that perhaps the, if we adopted an ordinance here that asked for the county supervision of this, then it might happen. However, after having said that, the--
Your time's up, sir.
That's the first time this evening the clock held. The information, the important information came from the director of the environmental services, who told me that his department is a fee-for-service department, and unless the county board of supervisors okayed this reimbursement to the city as far as paying for the county supervision, it couldn't happen. Dr. England then told me he would consult with county attorney that he works with, Ann Longo, and both of those people get back to me with regard to the probability of having the county support this issue. So for those reasons, and until we get this information, my suggestion is that we postpone any action on this until next meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Souza, I had the same questions regarding the medical problems that this type of action can cause the city and its residents, and I would concur with the councilman's recommendation that we do table this for a week so we can come up with some conclusive information that perhaps we get the county involved in doing this. I was going to question the attorney, our attorney, on the item that appears in the last page on the city council action. If the city council wishes to further regulate these facilities due to their potential health concerns, it would be more appropriate, according to the legal department, to incorporate a specific licensing provision separate from the land use. What do you mean by that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, sir. There we go. This is a land use ordinance, this is a zoning ordinance. This regulates how you use the land, whether your hours of operation, how big, except for what use it's on. If you start looking at how you operate that business and imposing medical-type regulations, that doesn't seem to be a zoning ordinance. We have two sets of laws, and see, we have the zoning ordinance in one book, in the other book, we have City Code, which is more regulatory. So our review was, if you're going to impose medical regulations or health regulations, it shouldn't be in the zoning ordinance itself. There should be a separate licensing requirement for tattoo partners.
But if we have a licensing ordinance, for example, that would cover this, it would mean that we would have to basically hire our own health department, would we not?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think that's what Mr. Scott, Councilmember Scott, was following up on. How would we regulate that? Certainly, we don't necessarily have the staff on board right now to be able to conduct those inspections. So perhaps you could enter into some sort of intergovernmental agreement with the county to have them come in and do the annual or semi-annual or quarterly inspections, whatever the council feels is appropriate.
But like is pointed out, they don't have these facilities, the county or the state does not have these facilities, well.
Yeah, but they may be willing, I mean, they have facilities, the county, they just don't do this. They're overwhelmed, so they don't monitor this entity. They certainly have the expertise to do it, and if they had an order from the county board of supervisors or the county attorney allowing us to enter into this agreement, they would do it for us. They have the capability.
Have you contacted or made yourself available to MAX in this?
No.
On MAX, the supervisor?
No, I haven't talked to you. This was this morning's project, and it was two or three hours to get what I have here. And I can tell you that the, they don't even have numbers, they don't even have statistics on how big a problem this is. In other states, this is really regulated. For example, Connecticut, you need a medical director to open one of these. Every place needs a medical director. We have nothing that we're monitoring, no data that we're collecting here. This is horribly inadequate, so I think we better wait until we get some more information on that.
I agree.
Okay, Councilmember Antoniak?
Remind me, because I read this a few days ago, we're not asking for special use permit capability. This strictly, this is strictly to do with--
We discussed it and opted not to.
We did discuss it, we opted not to. Okay, so it's a zoning, it's a zoning ordinance, and while I agree with Councilmember Scott's rationale, Councilmember Souza's rationale, if this goes on and we don't put a zoning ordinance in place, essentially, one can come in and get permitted tomorrow, and we'd be on our way.
Right.
Thirty days from now, and they'd be on their way, because the ordinance doesn't go into effect for thirty days?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, okay. So we'd be saying, you've got thirty days to get your permit in, with current law, and be grandfathered or abide by these. So, you know, I'm more versed to move forward and approve this ordinance, put this ordinance on the books. Let's get the law moving forward, then let's still do the discussion that you just had, Dr. Scott. I don't think one--
I can't argue that. One's a zoning, just don't. One's a zoning, that is a safety issue.
Right.
I'm not so sure, contrary to Oryx's input, I'm not so sure that this couldn't be defeated based on a, on a potential medical hazard, safety hazard, but that, we need little input on that.
But right now, we don't address them, period.
No, right now, we're not. So you want to move with the zoning, okay, and then later come back with the safety part of it, that's okay.
Yeah, and if anybody likes to champion that, I'm all for it. It makes sense that you're championing this and you're doing the homework on it, because you're the, you know, you're the expert up there.
Expert.
And a note in a minute would be adequate for that, would it not?
What's that?
To go to the county, a note in a minute would be adequate.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Have the council.
I agree. We'll work with Councilmember Scott, too.
Okay. Further discussion?
Just one comment, since we're going to have Dr. Scott do some more research on this. Are we going to try to include the makeup, tattooing, and other health hazards that occur in salon-type environments?
That's a really good question, because right now, makeup, tattooing, for example, extension of an eyebrow with tattooing, that, they don't even want to know anything about that. That is, they have the license to operate a beauty poller. There's no special section to that to give them the right to tattoo. So these are people running wild out there.
Councilor Holland, would you like to--
No.
Just to add to the continuation?
Well, I think it should be a part of it when you do the health--
It's agreed, then. Okay.
Yes. Well, one side, I think Ms. Cole will address that, just for your information. I believe some of that falls under the beauty board as far as their regulation of beauty pollers.
It's not, we happen to just do a little bit of research on this today. I'm by no means an expert, but they wouldn't be considered a tattooing, but they are regulated by the cosmetology boards.
Yeah, I know.
And they do get inspected by health--
Have you talked to them today?
A member of our staff talked to them, two days.
The cosmetology board in Tempe, I've been waiting six hours for my call back, having got a phone call.
Oh, we spoke, we didn't speak with the board, we spoke with the person who actually performs these services.
Okay. So anyway, we'll have--
We'll follow up on that.
Okay, good. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass seven zero.
Okay, well, I move to consider the preliminary plat for Wigwam David Canning. Wigwam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Subject five-acre properties located at the northeast corner of Wigwam Boulevard and Indian School Road within Phase 3B of the Palm Valley Plain Area Development District. The applicant this evening has requested approval of a condominium preliminary plat in order to subdivide five acres into four commercial buildings. This is the condominium preliminary plat, which basically matches the site plan that staff has already administratively approved. As you can see, the site contains four single-story buildings, commercial buildings, that range in size from 6,800 square feet to approximately 600 square feet. Two of the buildings have frontage on Indian School Road, and the remaining two buildings have frontage on Wigwam Boulevard. The site will be served by two access points, one towards the northern portion of the site on Wigwam Boulevard, and the other towards southern portion of the site along Indian School Road. Property will also have some amenities, including a water wall fountain feature towards the center of the site, and a pedestrian plaza area that could also include outdoor dining and affinity restaurants located in these units. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions you may have, as well as the applicant.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, I picked you up.
Yes. You'll be there. Yeah, I can take over from here, yes. At this point, do we have any comments or questions from the public? We have to see, quick, we have--
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve condominium preliminary plat for Wigwam Condom subdividing approximately five acres into four commercial condo buildings generally located at the northeast corner of Wigwam Boulevard and Indian School Road within Phase 3B of Palm Valley Plain Area Development District.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. Vice Mayor.
David, isn't there some construction going on in the corner right now?
Vice Mayor Cavalier, Councilmember Souza, you are correct. The construction documents for this site have been approved, and it is under construction. The applicant elected to submit a condominium plat after construction documents were approved, which is allowed by the city.
But there is buildings being erected on the site right now.
That is correct.
And where would that, where would these buildings be?
Those buildings are located in exactly these same locations that were approved by the construction documents. When a city approved the construction documents, we were not, I'm in the impression, we did not have knowledge that they would be condominiumized, but it really doesn't matter one way or the other, what comes first. That makes sense.
Make them construct the buildings, occupy them, whether or not--
Later convert to--
They want to subdivide them to condos, just like you would apartments.
You can do that anytime from the partners, putting them into condominiums.
I have a question. And it probably, probably really doesn't concern us, council, except I talked to Harvey about this when it first happened with regard to Indian Palms and the finish on those buildings, that block-type thing. A lot of criticism about that. I'm sure a lot of people like it, but I've heard, I've never heard criticism about a building before in this community with regard to that looks unfinished and so forth. Do we have any input into how they finish these buildings? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for condominium preliminary plat inputs, such as that usually isn't, isn't made or addressed at that point.
Where does it get addressed? Because that was never addressed.
During administrative site plan review.
So it got reviewed and planning and done, was it?
Correct.
Well, I guess the question would be, are they using the same, same block that they used on the other one? And that was--
That's exactly right.
That was with the gray, the gray among the beige areas, the grave was there. It's a nice-looking building, don't get me wrong, it's a nice facility, but I think what the comments were is that the color was a block gray, right, Harvey? Harvey and I had this discussion before on that.
That the scene of your block is a different color?
Yeah, so the question, I guess, would be more appropriate, do we know what color that building's going to be?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant is here, he might like to speak.
Hello, Mayor, members of council. My name is Landis Nordenberg, I'm with the Baye companies, and I'm the development director and also a citizen of Goodyear. Here you see the elevations, and it is a totally different elevation than what you would see at Indian Palms. I believe you're talking about the Mesa Stone that we use at Indian Palms, and this is more of a retail development, so you'll see a totally different look to it.
So we're looking in the beige tones and--
What we did is we looked around the neighborhood to find different colors that reflect the community. We looked at the church that's down the street on Indian School, and we also looked at some of the housing developments around there.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for me?
You haven't done this before, have you? Okay, so we have a--
Mayor?
Yes.
I just had a question for the planning and zoning person. Underneath the Planning and Zoning Commission Action, you were involved in that, it talks about the traffic signal.
Yes.
Well, it looks like that Suncoor is going to be responsible for putting that traffic signal up there. Part of the issue is that it takes, we have such a long lead time, oh, wait a minute, I'm detecting a little, it's such a long lead time to get a traffic signal there, and the traffic is already beginning to be noticeable, a lot of, because of the construction trucks and everything around there. What insurance do we have that tells us that they're going to go ahead and get this light ordered, because it's, it's taking such a long time? One year, yeah, that was, that was what we asked her. So if you're going to have a traffic light up there, when it's needed, it's almost like it needs to be, the order needs to be put in now.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Holland, I'd like to direct you once again to the site plan, or rather, the area photo exhibit. As you can see, there are some other developments around this intersection that have not been built yet, and after discussions with engineering, they have determined that traffic signal at this point is not warranted just with this development. They also indicated that this development should also not have to pay for the entire cost of a traffic signal, that there's larger traffic within the entire Phase 3B area of Palm Valley.
Just, I want to just add to that. You said it's not necessary right now, but there's such a long lead time to get this light that if you don't put in for now, when you really will need it, we'll be back to the problem that we have at the West Valley Hospital where it's very difficult to get out and make a left going on to McDowell Road. Are you familiar with what I'm referring to?
Impossible.
Yeah, it's impossible, is what Councilman Cavalier said. So I'm just concerned, because it's already starting to get busy, and I know it's not warranted now, but it sounds like we need to put in an order for it or get our developer to understand the need and the problems that we have dealing with the lights.
Mayor, council members, if the warrant hasn't been conducted to date, we can initiate that. There's also lead time on furniture, meaning the poles and the lights and the fixtures, about 12 to 16 weeks. There's also other issues associated with the impact on the neighboring community that will be included in the warrant, but we can initiate that.
Right, right, and then we would be guaranteed to have it when the time came up, right?
Yes. If it meets warrants, on the outcome of the warrants, if it meets warrants, then we'll go ahead and initiate the, the order of the furniture and then the installation.
Will the city buy that light and get reimbursed by the developer when he's ready to put it in, or how does that work?
It would all depend on the, if there's an existing development agreement, and if that's in place and stipulated within that agreement, yes.
Is it?
Looks like it is.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I think. Any discussion further? Okay, roll call vote, please. No, yeah, no, roll call vote. No.
Pre-pla.
Yeah, it's up down. All who favor the motion signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, seven zero. Public hearing for Citrus Ridge Ranch. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Harvey Kraus will do the presentation.
Briefly, Mayor, council members, this is a public hearing for an annexation at the southeast corner of Citrus Road and Lower Buckeye Road. It's 77.63 acres. It's called, referred to as Citrus Ridge. The applicant is initiating this annexation. The applicant is a participant in the memorandum of understanding, the infrastructure, and has agreed to the terms of that agreement. They have submitted a zoning application and to zone it just less than three, three units to an acre, which council will be seeing in the near term. No action is required after the public hearing. This is a requirement of the annexation process. That concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the public to make comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll go to consider adopting the notice of intention to raise fees. Larry Lang?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As part of your packets, you received a report from BBC Research and Consulting, actually two reports, for maximum supportable development impact fees for both nonutilities and utilities. This is the first step in the process of adopting these fees, meeting the statutory requirements. A draft copy of this report has been in circulation for, I believe, approximately one month now with various members of the development community. We have been reviewing this draft copy with those members and intend to continue through the, throughout the process. This step is required to give a notice of intent, it requires a publication. If the city council adopts a notice of intent, a public hearing would be established on November 13th to hear input from the public on this issue. After receiving that input on November 13th, the city council must wait at least two weeks to adopt or consider that, and so that would be scheduled for November 27th. Should the city council elect to adopt different impact fees as presented in this report, those would become effective March 1st of 2007. This is an ongoing process that is, actually, the utility impact fee study started in May of 2004. The nonutility impact fee start, study started approximately one year ago. One of the reasons it held up this long to be presented to you was a review of the projects included within the original report, provided extensive fees, but also provided extensive obligations to the city of Goodyear for its proportionate share. And so that liability was something that we had to work down to get it down to what could be at least manageable levels if, if indeed the fees were adopted. The reason I say that is that these fees become an obligation if we adopt them, because the program that we adopt to adopt them becomes an obligation we have to, we have to meet up with, and the fees are not necessarily the only source of funding. There are a couple of members in the audience tonight that have been participating in this process, along with a number of others, and we do appreciate their input. As part of this process, we have already received input from them as to items that were included in that report, which are inappropriate to be included, and as part of our process, if this goes forward, we will present those items to the city council at the public hearing. That is not to say that they will not present other items or opposition to it, but we want to the city council to know what issues have been discussed over this period of time. The second where that helps us is that the fees outlined in this report are admittedly quite high, they are, they would be the largest in the state of Arizona. And if the city is not, if the city council desires to adopt at a lesser level, we would like to be able to provide you options of how to do it at lesser levels and what CIP projects would eliminate, and that's input that we're also receiving. Couple of people that are here tonight, I'm sure, would like to talk on this issue, and I welcome their input, or I think you would welcome their input on that. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. So just go over this real quick, Larry. We're going to have a motion to adopt a notice of intention to raise fees, and we're going to have a motion on the, create a new category of development impact fee, a motion to create a new category of reclaimed water development fee, and a motion on the date. So do you still have those to cover, or do you want us to--
All of those are covered in this discussion. It is all tied to the resolution of intention. And for the record, I missed one statement that is very critical-- And for the record, I missed one statement that is very critical. The action being asked of you tonight will not set anything in motion to increase any fee by itself. The City Council will have to vote on that issue later. And tonight is not even saying that you have an opinion on what that fee should be. I forgot to mention that, but that's very important in germane to what your question was.
Okay, so we've had the staff presentation. Now comments from the public?
Procedurally, just real quick, Mayor, just some clarification. So we've got a notice. We're not going through one through 12, making separate motions.
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I've got a little cheat sheet here. We're going to make four motions, right?
We do need to make multiple motions.
No, go through them. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Rachel Aha. I represent the Home Builders Association of Central Arizona, 3200 East Camelback, Phoenix 85018. I'd just like to express my appreciation and appreciation of all of my members of your staff to allow us to get involved in this process so early and to have an open dialogue numerous times and as many times as we've had necessary to this point. We do still have significant questions. I know that the staff has asked us to submit them and they are prepared to answer them, but that I would just urge you all, when this comes back to you before the public hearing, to look closely at the questions that have been asked and the answers that have been given by staff, just so you can understand, not just residential, but commercial, all developments, concerns with the study that is before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ellingson?
Mayor, members of the council, Jay Ellingson, Suncor Development, 14130 West McDowell Road, Goodyear, Arizona. It's been a pleasure to be with you this evening. I mean that respectfully and for all the actions taken. I salute all of you. My only comment is, is we, as, I don't know how many times we've gone through this, is this the fourth time, Steve?
Yes.
At least in my tenure. It would be very important in this process if we could find that the recommendations wind themselves down to some reasonable expectation. The report does a good job in justifying a fee that's staggering. It'd be staggering in all aspects in terms of development to your city, whether it be residential, commercial, or industrial. It would make you noncompetitive with a lot of your neighbors. And before we get engaged like we've been engaged before, where we hire a great consultant and lawyers to review this process, it would be nice to know that we could come to some reasonable expectation in advance of the final vote, so that we all know what we're talking about. Your consultant is very good, very skilled, can justify what he has written, has great responses. I think he said he's been in the industry writing reports like this for 18 years. It shows. I bet I can find another just as skilled. So there's always another opinion. And I'm really honest with you in this effort, I hope that we can come to some expectation that's more reasonable than this report offers that. I can also tell you that in determination in terms of who pays for what, it does obligate the city at a very staggering commitment, if you will, in terms of the things that you have to finance. One of the things that we have supported for many, many years as a company is that development pays for itself. We don't want to pay more than our fair share. And there's arguments in terms of some of the questions that we've asked, and in fact, construction is being asked to pay for more than its fair share. Some of that has to do with the way you collect construction sales tax being used to finance your share of the portion of the commitments that's represented by the report. I don't think that's fair. That means construction is paying twice. So these are basic questions to the report and I'm not asking for any conclusion other than in our minds, your collective minds, that we could come to some reasonable expectation before we get too much further down the road and everybody goes in a direction that's not necessary. So thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? You see, no, a motion to, and the motion is to adopt a notice of intention to raise fees.
And does that include items one through nine? I'm looking at the recommendation. I'm sorry.
Mayor, doesn't a public notice cover everything?
Yeah, that's the way I... I don't know where you are. Oh, I was, I'm actually on the item, not on the agenda. I apologize. I got it. Items H, I got items H1. Okay, one, two, three, and four. Okay. I got you. I just didn't, I didn't read it the same way in the co-op. Well, I'm not sure. Maybe you, would you explain it for me? No, I got it. H, you need, you need... Are you looking for 062817, recommendation to adopt a notice of intent to take the action items 1A through I?
Yes, that's what we're doing. And I think that's what you meant with the 12 maybe, but...
I did. Yes, I did. I apologize.
And I appreciate that.
Yep.
That helps. So when we're talking about notice of intention to raise fees, you're talking about 1A through I?
Yep. Makes sense.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Aye. Do you need to read anything before I do that? No? Okay. Nice, so move, as I just stated.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Souza. It's open for discussion. We will have three other motions on this related subject, but on this one is probably the most important. Councilmember Antoniak?
Two points, I think. Reasonable is definitely a discussion we need to have. Second, any communication that comes in from here on out from the public as it relates to this, I'd appreciate just getting it, not holding on until a public hearing. This is a complex subject matter. This is not an easy one to digest and it's not something you wait until Friday before a Monday meeting. I can't stress that enough. I said at the first meeting I got on this council, and I'm going to keep harping on it and harping on it and harping on it until we keep the communication. I know I'm a difficult person to get a hold of during the day, but as Brian smirks, because he's been trying over the last couple of weeks. Anyway, I would appreciate all the communication that does come in, whether it's from the Home Builders Association, a developer, or the general public, or constituent, that that get funneled our direction as soon as possible, as is reasonably proven. But I think reasonable is definitely a discussion that staff should expect and I think it's one that's incumbent upon us. We're having a conversation about economic development and I see $18,500. There's no doubt, I'm going to ask questions as I go through this.
Okay, good. Thank you. Councilmember Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did write down a question here. What will this do to our acquisition of commercial and industrial property? And Mr. Ellingson pretty much answered that for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Lord?
Thank you. I think we definitely need to be looking at, those percentages are pretty high. We came in on those and you're absolutely right, Councilwoman Souza. We're looking at businesses coming in and more buildings to be dealt with and that. Although, we need a discussion because what we don't get here, we're going to have to give up something here. So we all realize that. And so we're going to have to be looking at some of these CIP projects and some of those other things we're definitely not going to be able to do if we lower these. But definitely we need a good discussion and I'm with Councilman Antoniak. I'd liked the information earlier.
Okay, Councilmember Holland?
Is this something that, to help us understand better, Larry, that we might need like an hour or a couple of hours to discuss as part of a workshop or a working group?
I think that, Mayor, Councilman Holland, I think that that might be appropriate as we get in the press, as we get closer to the public hearing. I want to be extremely careful that we are providing you with the input that we have received at that time and that we are not, at that point, creating a meeting prior to the public hearing that might appear to be set in direction. But it is an extremely complex issue and there are a number of other issues with it and I think that sometime in early November or late October to spend some time on that issue may make a lot of sense in a work session.
That would help.
Good idea.
Yeah, because we don't necessarily have to take any direction at that time, but I think we need to understand what it is we're going to, and what our options are of giving up something. Because I don't want to give up something that might be ultimately really important. So I want to make sure that we know what we say we give up, we really understand.
Councilmember Holland?
One more bit of information, because when we do raise fees to a certain extent, it does take us out of competition with the other cities. It could. And so I think we need, we should be having that discussion so that we don't end up laying unbuilt because we've put these high costs on.
That is an appropriate discussion in the process. Also included in the report are comparisons to other communities. They do show you what those fees are. I think a number of questions have come up on that issue and they're definitely warranted for your consideration.
Councilmember Souza?
Last comment I'd make, just in terms of processes, you know, we get around these meaty subjects and I know I'm always the holdup on the five o'clock start time, but on these kind of things, I'm more than willing to push my, as long as we do a little advanced planning, staff-wise, and we work a little bit more than seven days in advance, you know, if we need to come in at four o'clock or three o'clock for a longer work session prior to a meeting, such that we're not usurping ourselves as a dialogue that's important on a subject matter like this, let's do it. I think I'm probably the only one that typically holds out on that question, but this is definitely... This is definitely one that's pretty important.
Okay, just a couple of comments from me, Larry, if you'd take. One that I agree with, Councilmember Antoniak, I think everybody does it, we need to be part of this process and continually updated. I agree also with Mr. Ellingson that we need to work, partner with these developers and builders, I should say, because if we come down the wire and we're separated by a long distance, we're going to take, it's going to take a hit. So we need to listen to one another. We need to make sure that we correlate the construction sales tax at three and a half percent with what we're doing here. We may reduce one and add another, but certainly if we can't demonstrate that our construction sales taxes are for specific things that are or are not related to impact fees, then we're going to be answering some tough questions later with the state legislature. I think that, and I don't know if you want to do this, but we almost need an economic analysis of how this is going to affect us at the different levels, because we're getting into a housing downturn and we don't know when we're going to come out of it. But we, for example, we need to know what is the inventory of new houses out there right now. And I would guess it's fairly substantial, but I don't know that. But when you come back to us and you talk to us about things you need to say, we've got 1,200 houses that are built and not occupied, or whatever that is, because this will exacerbate any problem we have, I think. So we've got to be careful of that, in my view. But an economic analysis of how it's going to affect us, if someone could do that, well, that makes our job easier. And then the last thing is, we went through a lot of problems with the state legislature and the Home Builders Association last year on impact fees and construction sales tax. If we do something they don't consider reasonable, I'm going to be testifying day in and day out down there, Larry, and if that won't work, it just won't work. So we need to have something that's...
The inevitable reality is the cost of business is going up and we all need to work together on that regardless. And whatever commitments you make this year, here at this, do it in good faith and good spirit so that the mayor doesn't have to put his time down there at the legislature and for the list governing.
Okay. Okay, so, see, we have a motion to approve the notice of intent and all those in favor signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it seven zero. Okay, yeah, now we're going to go to call for motion to adopt a notice of intent to create a new category of development impact fee. Where is that on our...
Mr. Mayor, we adopt a notice of intent to create a new category.
Okay, is that number two, development impact?
Yes. Yes. Okay, of development impact fees, storm drainage development impact fee and assessed fees for this new category of development impact fees. Is that correct?
Can't we just do all three?
Okay, then, then I, let me finish my motion, then I prove that we adopt the recommendations number two, three, and four as printed in our agenda, adopt a notice of intent to create a new category of development impact fees, storm drainage development impact fee and assessed fees for this new category of development impact fees. Number three recommendation, adopt a notice of intent to create a new category of reclaimed water development impact fee and assessed fees for this new category of development impact fees. And number four recommendation, set November 13, 2006, is the date for the public hearing on the adoption and/or increase of the proposed development fees.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak and second from Councilmember Lord. Any public discussion? Okay, council discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Those, guys have it seven zero. Any council members have any inquiries of staff? Any adjournments? Yes. And the impact at differing levels?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Good meeting. Adjourn.